This conference will now be recorded.
At 6:00 PM, as prescribed by VTC, a government code section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. And please note, we have all of our council members in attendance. Executive session one, we will convene into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071, advice of counsel, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel, section 551.087, economic development, Texas government code, and section 1.05, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct regarding a consultational legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation of or discussion of said item as needed. And we will convene at 6:01 PM. For those new members, please make sure you completely log out of this one and log into the other one.
Boy, I do feel like Superman just flying around from one place to the other.
Can sing you a song like that? No one did think so.
Yeah, I'll pass. Thank you anyway. Proud to see you back.
One, two, three, four, five.
Everybody doing okay?
As good as we can.
One, two, three. There, arch. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. Action items. Action and/or vote may be taken on the following agenda items. Number two, we reconvene them from executive session into open session to act as deemed appropriate in the city council discretion regarding a take any necessary action regarding any regular meeting agenda items into any regular meeting agenda item. And we can reconvene at 6:17 PM. Anybody have any action from executive session?
No action.
No action. All right, we will recess until 6:30 PM. The smoking lamp is lit for those of y'all in the Navy or served on ship.
Do we have to smoke?
No.
I'm glad.
Just one of those things that gets drilled into your brain over so much time, you know, kind of like that if you've served on ship, you know, you get that ooh wee, sweeper, sweepers, man your broom.
When you sweep down four and a half.
There you go. Paying special attention to hatches and something else. I don't remember, but.
What follows is what I always liked, which was liberty call, liberty call.
Hey Johnny.
Hey guys. So, so we have a recess going. See if you can talk this kid right here.
Hi kid.
Right there. John Paul, he recited that he at school today, he finally had to complete his homework, which was reciting the Giddesburg Address. He practiced last week in front of the lions.
Four score and seven years ago.
Come on, let's see.
Come on.
Just do the, do the paragraph three.
No.
Please. Sam, Molly.
Did they teach him what a score is though? Or did he just have to memorize it?
No, they taught us.
No, sir. Please.
All right. Sorry.
Paul, what have you?
Paul's very good. I'll give you five bucks.
Man, I'll double what Paul gives you.
Four score and seven years ago.
Look it up real quick.
Let me see.
I'll get it on the computer and get it real fast.
Hello, Darcy. We're in recess right now. Okay, here, just to begin. Here we go.
Nobody's listening, I promise.
Oh.
Right. Two. Go ahead.
Hey, John Paul, you want to know something? You want to see something funny? Wait till we go COVID's all gone and we're doing in-person meetings again. Watch the audience and the council trying to say the Texas pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag.
And be entertaining.
Yeah.
You want to do it? See, they say it. We've got a few minutes left. Okay, all right, not happening tonight. I tried.
He did a really nice job of it out at the thing at the POA RV park this weekend. I was impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me that one.
For a moon pie. A moon pie. And RC Kula. I was offering him a moon pie.
It brings back some memories.
Ah ha.
I heard they, they stopped production of Mr. Pibb.
Really? Yeah. So they weren't making enough money on it worth it. Sales were not adequate to maintain it.
It was a duplicate item, the fact that they own Dr. Pepper, you know, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there was no need to have both of them. Prior to us really only being able to say that we're Dr. Pepper, we had to have Mr. Pibb.
You know, in San Antonio, there was a Whopper Burger. And before Burger King could come into San Antonio, they had to buy out Whopper Burger.
Yeah.
Louie's, the board of directors, all the shareholders, I think it was two days ago, they finally voted to go ahead and liquidate Louie's.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
They've been in a real hurt. There's almost no way to do a buffet safely. Right now, it's just almost impossible.
Yeah.
Indeed. They couldn't get a handle on it, so.
Kevin, did you find the legs when you stand?
Okay.
Yes, I did, sir. Hopefully it won't fall on me now. I turned my camera off so I could do it in private, just in case I couldn't figure the dang thing out.
There you go. Well, if it doesn't fall on you once, you're a rare and unusual individual because I think just about every one of the had it come down on us at least once in some way or other.
Well, I'll keep a watch out for it.
Well, I'll keep a watch out for it.
It's a nice deal, but still, it's kind of a threat to life at times. I actually had to cut my poles off a little bit so that I could get the thing up and get it set. When I tried to do it with it, the full length, I just never could get up there.
Yeah, I have to admit, I was reaching to most of my height to, to get there, up there with the poles the way they are. I can see.
It takes a reach.
It looks like we're just waiting on. Counselor Williams. I'll give him till another minute.
He's there.
There he is.
I'm here.
Couldn't see you.
Oh.
We'll get started then.
I need him.
All right, we reconvene into open session at six thirty-one P M. And we will go into citizen comments. Said, uh, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who has comments for council? That's not on the agenda.
Yes, Mayor, uh, Kevin Madison, I think I sent in a request earlier.
Yes, yours is an agenda item.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-four-one-five, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences; information regarding holiday schedules; recognition of individuals; reminders regarding city council events; reminders regarding community events; health and safety announcements. Uh, first of all, this is our first full meeting together, so, again, I want to congratulate our three new council members. Job well done, welcome. I'll give you all the opportunity to, to say something here in a little bit. Have Mr. Collins. Let me see here. He was not able to join us tonight. But he asked me to let y'all know. To Chalane, is it, is it Chalane or Shalane? I never.
Chalane.
All right.
Chalane.
All right, to Chalane, congratulations and good luck, council work is very rewarding. To the staff, my fellow council members and mayor, my time on council, working with you all, you all, was a great adventure and a treasured two years. Best to all, Tim Collins. All right. Uh, let's see, holiday schedules, uh, don't, we have Thanksgiving, obviously, next week. So offices will definitely be closed on Thursday next week. Uh, I think that's the only day, is Thursday. Community events this Saturday, uh, there is a group of citizens that have put together a. Kind of a diversity and inclusion outreach group. So they're. They're called Be The Bridge. Is the name of the, the, the group, and they are hosting an event this Saturday at six o'clock. Here in, at the City Hall parking lot, um, right over here, the clearing between City Hall and the library, and they are showing a documentary and having a discussion regarding Native American heritage for Native American month for November, so. Be The Bridge is the name of this organization outreach program. Miss Sample, Emily Sample is the one that is putting this together, for those of y'all who know Emily. So if you have nothing to do Saturday evening and would like to attend, please do so, six o'clock. Um, let's see, health and safety announcements. Excuse me, if you have not heard, Travis County went, uh, up to stage four on their COVID. Risk scale. As far as I could tell, looking at the. Looking at the chart, though, uh, I could not really tell that it changed. Uh, a whole lot of stuff, let's see. Where was my? Travis, there it is, Travis County. The stage four. Risk-based guidelines. Uh, if you're older, if you're a high-risk individual, it has gotten more strict, uh, avoid social gatherings greater than two people, uh, avoid non-essential travel and avoid dining and shopping. For those of us that are not in the high-risk group, the only additional restriction is, uh, they recommend avoiding non-essential travel. They are recommending business capacity be lowered from tw- from fifty to seventy-five percent, down to twenty-five to fifty percent, but so far I have not seen any actions taken by, uh, Travis County or the city of Austin to. Make any further restrictions on businesses. Firewise. I want to congratulate, uh, the people with Firewise, they got their certification, Firewise certification for the tenth year in a row. I was forwarded this certificate. Uh, let me see what it says here. National Firewise USA Program Certificate of Recognition, the National Fire Protection Association acknowledges that Lago Vista, located in Leander, Texas, don't know why it says that, has successfully completed the Firewise USA Program's annual requirements for 2020, and is a participating site and good standing throughout the 2021 calendar year, James T. Polley, President, National Fire Protection Association, issued November sixteenth, twenty twenty. So congratulations to the volunteers that head up our Firewise program, uh, ten years in a row now for our wise certification. Let's see, what else do I have? Oh, um. Lago bucks, have a little announcement on the Lago bucks, we have, uh, received all of our funding as of this week from Travis County, so, uh, everything is, uh, everything is covered, we have received all of the coronavirus relief fund. Allocations that we are entitled to, uh, I know, uh, currently, I show that the shopping period for Lago bucks. Uh, is, is due to expire November thirtieth, uh, if you recall, I originally set it for December thirty-first, so people could shop during the holidays, and then the county came back and made some changes, and I had to. Change my shopping period, when now Travis County has came and given us all of our money, so. I'm going to have to work with, I'll get with the businesses. And, and make sure they're aware of everything, uh, it'll be, it'll probably be up to the business, I guess, but. The November thirtieth is not going to be, is no longer a hard deadline for shopping with your Lago bucks, so if you're still in possession of a few bucks and you're worried that you will not be able to spend them by November thirtieth, uh, that is no longer a hard deadline. We do encourage people to, to use them and get them to the businesses, uh, during this calendar year, um, but, again, you will be able to shop, eat out wherever through the month of December, and I'll be make, we'll be putting that out on the website and on social media, making that update, and we'll be getting with the businesses to know that, let them know that they can still take the Lago bucks after November thirtieth. I think that is all that I have, Dave Williams? Yes, sir.
St. Mary's Church is having it, Catholic Church is having their bazaar on Saturday, it's called, uh, Christmas in November, uh, it's going to be from ten to four, and it's outside in the parking lot for social distancing purposes, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, um, some folks might have seen me posting on social media about the Lions Club barbecue event that is happening next week, we're having a fundraising event and it took pre-orders, um, I want to let, thank everybody, first of all, for putting your orders in, we filled the smokers, we can take no more orders, and we will be prepping Monday and Tuesday, cooking on Wednesday and delivering Wednesday evening, so just wanted to, once again, thanks to community, thank the community for, uh, participating in that event.
Good job, Lions Club, awesome. Any outgoing council members? Other, Tim's, I read Tim's statement. Any incoming council members have anything that they would like to say? No, you notice, you notice I said that as Paul Roberts got up from his seat, because you know Paul was going to want to say something. Oh, look, he's back.
I'll, I'll be the other Paul.
Mr. Prince, go ahead.
Uh, so, uh, there was, uh, one week of Paul Roberts on the, on the council, and, and now I guess it'll be two years of Paul Prince, and I'm, uh, looking forward to it, appreciate all the citizens who supported me in my campaign, and, uh, I, of course, remain open to ongoing feedback and suggestions, and, uh, my email inbox and message, uh, messenger input is open, so, uh, tell me what, what I need to know, and I'll make sure that we talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just want to echo exactly what Paul said, thank you so much to the voters for putting me back in office, looking forward to another two years of serving them, and, um, by all means, I'm wide open, just like Paul is, please reach out to me, if you've got any concerns, I'd be happy to, uh, try and help address them.
All right. Yes, Ms. Marion.
Of course, echoing what, uh, these two fine gentlemen have said, but I'm honored to be here and, and looking forward to serving, um, and. Really, I, I just wanted to say that, um, I also am really looking forward to learning with and from fellow council members and city staff, um, I have a lot to learn, and I'm really looking forward to that challenge, and, um, as always, encourage the community to, to reach out, I have big ears, and I'm ready to listen and bring forth concerns for the citizens, and, and I'm all about seeing, um, you know, how we can continue to, to, to serve our, our community well, so thank you to everybody who, um, came out and voted, whether you voted for me or not, it's great showing, so thank you.
Thank you. Right, anybody else have any announcements? All right, well, we're going to move on to action items. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit because we have an outsider guest with us, so, uh, we're going to jump ahead to agenda item number ten. Number ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding creating a request for proposals for household hazardous waste collection. So as you know, uh, uh, Mr. Demain, uh, came and gave a presentation, oh gosh, in October, and then he was here last meeting for questions, he is on with us again tonight, uh, but you have basically seen the presentation about the type of service that we are considering. So if anybody has any questions, I'll let you ask, um, Mr. Demain here in a little bit, any questions that you may have, what we're looking for tonight is, this is not, uh, we're not at that point to, uh, award a contract or anything like that to, uh, household hazardous waste. H H W. Right now, we're, I'm wanting to know if. The service is something that council wants to, to, uh, consider, and if it is, then we need to give direction to staff to put this out for, for an R F P and get, uh, all, all companies to, um, send in their proposals. So, council, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
I thi- I think it's a worthwhile program, and, uh, from everything we've seen in his. Everything we've seen in his presentation, uh, it was, it seemed like it was very cost-effective, and it would allow people to get rid of their hazardous waste. I would be in favor of putting out a R F P for it.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Marion.
I would also be in favor, um, I put this topic out, um, um, on the community boards and on Nextdoor, um, while campaigning, just to get folks' feedback, and, and overwhelmingly, the feedback to the idea was positive, so, um, I, I would be in favor of it also.
Thank you, and yes, I can say that I've got, uh, several emails from people wanting to know when this was going to start already. If you've ever had to try and, and get rid of household hazardous waste, it is very difficult for us out here, we are so isolated, you know, Hutto, uh, somewhere. Burnet somewhere, and then South Austin, I think are the three closest places, uh, is not an easy task. So, anyway. Anybody else, Mr. Prince?
Uh, yeah, I've had some citizens ask me kind of logistics about the program and, uh, and then a larger context question, so I try to fold those together, there were questions around, you know, what about larger items like tires and old, uh, you know, refrigerators or washing machines, those kind of things, I think those should be considered, uh, but the larger question that, that was also raised to me is how would this factor in with discussions that we've had in the past about a transfer station in the city? You know, whether there's a transfer station for, you know, the, to address the dumping problems that we've had, or brush, recycling, but also hazardous waste, uh, had, had we, uh, with this program, would we, would we eliminate any hazardous waste from the transfer station, or was that never included in that, so if, if we could have some feedback on that, to understand the bigger context before we issue an R F P for just this hazardous waste portion, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, okay, so, um, your larger items, uh, your tires and your appliances, uh, this program will not handle those, those are just something that they're not equipped to do, because they're so large, and tires take, um. A special processing, uh, so those, those items are not included. Right now, and this, this will come with the proposals. The electronics, so if you do have computers or television and stuff like that, that is something that is available, uh, if you recall the presentation, it, there was a little bit extra, sort of eighty-nine cents or approximately, it was like a dollar five if we wanted to include electronics, uh, so that would help some, uh, with larger items. Now for the transfer stations that we're proposing. The, if this is a very successful program, and we really don't have a need for paint and oil. If this is a very successful program and we really don't have a need for paint and oil and all that stuff in the future because, because of this program, then yes, it would definitely eliminate the need for that collection. Or at least reduce it if nothing else. You know, the TCEQ requirements for the storage and collection of this stuff is, you know, it's pretty strict. So if this program works, then yes, we would only have to include the things like tires and appliances in our new Green Center, you know, the things that this program does not include. You know, and right now I can't see the Green Center being open for probably two years. I mean, we don't know yet, but I, I just have a feeling it would be at least a year, two years before that would be operational. These programs are usually, I think Mr. Demeen said this is an initial two-year contract. So, you know, we got two years to, to see if this program works and evaluate it and, and see what we would need as far as the transfer station. Does that, does that help? Yeah. Yes, Ms. Marion?
Um, I was wondering, Mayor, I know we had one company come out and present. Do you know, have, have any other companies reached out to the city to possibly come out and, and present on this topic or share what their service and fees might look like?
No, I have not received anything from anybody else. I have done some searches just to see who else was out there. Right now my search is turning up nothing in our area. I, I have seen where BFI or some others do offer the services. Waste connections, I believe, but not in our area. So that's just on my search. But again, the RFP would be, you know, if there's companies out there that I just have not found or, you know, are not aware that we are actually considering this, this gives them that opportunity to make the proposal. And then if we, if we choose to, you know, obviously we've got others, then we would more than likely want to see their presentation, you know? So, but right now, also HHW is the only one that's made contact with the city. Anybody else? All right. Any comments from citizens? Yes, Darcy?
Good evening, gentlemen and other city councils, Ms. Marion. There's a couple of people on here. They don't have their cameras working and they've been kind of working behind the scenes here on picking up trash. And there are two, there's two different companies up here and they are going free. Have been picking up stuff that people have dumped. There are also large trash removers and stuff like that. And I think it, it's, it's been helping. Anytime anyone's posting something, one of these two gentlemen have been doing it for free. And, and picking it all up and dumping it for free. And I just wanted to give them a hand. One of them is on here, but his camera's not working. I tried to text him, but, and so I just want you to know that there is people that are trying to help settle this as well. And considering, you know, about the Green Center and all that, and that's why I've been here for a year. I really would love to be able to log off of this and not have to fight this until I die. So I'm just letting you know that, that I am not just sitting here complaining all the time, that I am secretly trying to work with people and posting people's cards and business cards to whenever anyone needs anything dumped. And these gentlemen, whenever there's something out in the wilderness, they are coming and getting it. And I, I just would like to thank them. I think they're amazing citizens of Lago Vista and we should give them a hand because they're, they're doing this for free and it's not causing the city a dime. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. And the citizens of Lago staff, everybody appreciates the hard work, the volunteers to do stuff like that. Oh, and I got a thing from staff. FYI, our current trash company will pick up one large appliance each week with their regular. Let me open that up with the regular trash. However, do not take that for granted. I'm going to tell you, don't just set out a refrigerator out on the curb and expect the trash company to pick that up. There are some scheduling requirements that are involved, but yes, and I'm glad that was brought to my attention. Yes, we do have the ability to clean size mattresses, certain appliances. I don't know. I doubt tires are on that list. Your appliances probably also have to be drained of any fluids and capped and tagged by a professional plumber before the trash company would pick it up. So so Paul, there is a, there is that capability, but it does take a little effort. So.
Thank you.
Yes, Darcy, one more.
I, I, I just wanted to tell you, Paul, that yes, you can, this person who is online and who does dumping and stuff like that. He said that Phoenix Tire or Phoenix Automotive up here right on Lowman will take any of your tires and it's for a fee, of course, but they will take your tires there. So you can get rid of your tires up here.
All right. Thank you for that information. All right. Anybody else from the audience? All right. If that is all the comments, then I will entertain a motion. Oh, hold on. Before I do that, Mr. Mr. Demeen? Is there any, since, since you've waited graciously with us, is there anything that you would like to add? Or counsel, if you have any questions for Mr. Demeen, he is here.
I mean, I'll, I'll start off by fielding any questions that may be out there.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Demeen?
One quick question. Can you remind us, when you presented, was it a two-year commitment or three years?
A three years is what was in the presentation.
Three years. Thank you.
All right. Since there appears to be no questions, we just, we're glad that the, the council's taking this item up or we hope that what you do, it seems like you will. And we look forward to, to going through the process. We feel good about our chances and we look forward to it all.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm making a motion that we put out notice for bids for a service of this type to dispose of hazardous waste.
Okay. So motion is to begin the RFP process?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
All right. I have the motion by Ms. Weatherly in a second by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries. We will begin the process. Thank you all very much, Mr. Demeen. Thank you once again for spending your evening with us.
Glad to be here and we look forward to seeing the proposal or the RFP ready.
Have a good, have a good Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. You too.
All right. So now we will go back to the beginning. We will start our public hearings and possible action. We'll start with number four. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to section 17 of chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for the addition of a detached accessory building that exceeds the otherwise maximum permissible size and height at 2171 Surrey Lane, which is in Barcade Ranches, Platte 8, Lot 8049 Alpha. The public hearing is already open from last meeting. So we have a resident who owns three lots and they are looking to put a 2,064 square foot accessory building on this lot. There were some, the issues that they had to come to planning and zoning with. There was some height issues because of accessory buildings are worded different than primary residence. So accessory building is 18 and a half feet from the finished floor. However, it is 5.3 feet shorter than what would be required if it was a normal building and it was gone from the highest point on the lot. There was that. And then there was the size issue because of 2,600 square foot accessory building in relation to the primary residence, 2,593 square feet. This has gone to planning and zoning. Six members were present, participated. They unanimously recommended approval at their regular meeting on October 8th, 2020. Let me see what else. I've read all this in before, so I'm just trying to skim through it. All right. So I think all of y'all were here last, last meeting. So does it, council, do you have any questions? Any clarification on the application? And I do have staff here as well. Roy is here. So if we have any, if you have any questions, we can ask him as well. Yes, Mr. Davila.
Mayor, I still have some concerns about the, the relative size of this structure that's to be constructed on that site. I think Mr. Prince was probably on planning and zoning when the decision was made. I also have a little bit of a, a problem with the way that this has been presented to council because it appears to me to be a conditional approval by P and Z, excuse me, by planning and zoning without it having been labeled that way. The condition being that if this citizen or this resident were to apply for a driveway, they would have to have planning, I'm sorry, Building and Standards Commission approve that. So this seems to me to be rather cumbersome because it is, it does appear to me to be a conditional approval by planning and zoning. I think Mr. Prince might be able to enlighten us more on the discussion that was had about this conditional use that is being proposed by this individual.
Hold on, Mr. Prince. So that you say conditional. I don't see where it says that there was anything stated that on the, on a, on any certain condition. The driveway is a whole separate issue. You know, even if, even if they apply for the variance for the driveway and that's not approved, you know, it's not going to, it shouldn't have any effect on the actual building itself. So I, I don't, I don't see where it says, states anything that, you know, this is on the condition that the Building and Standards Report of Adjustment approves their, approves their driveway. I don't, I don't that, but.
If I can read the, the recommendation made by planning and zoning, at least this is what's in our packet. It says the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the application subject to height limitation of no more than 19 feet above Jason grade and the approval of a variance from the Building Standards Commission to allow a driveway on Sagebrush Trail. There were six members present at the meeting and one that voted in favor of the recommendation. Subject to means this is a conditional situation.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Prince, did you have something that you would like to state?
Yeah, what I was going to say, and Mr. Jambo can help here too, I'm sure, is the, it was recognized that part of the plan was putting the driveway in, which is not a decision that is under the purview of planning and zoning. And so that was obviously not decided by planning and zoning. And, and, and the language as Mr. Davila reads, I mean, that it, it says what it says. I, you know, I, I would say, I'm not sure the resident would, would want to put this building in if he can't get a driveway to get the vehicles in and out. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure he's, he's, he would, his next step would be to apply for that driveway variant. So it's kind of a, probably he needs both of them for it to make sense. But, but just the way our ordinance is set up, he's got to do it in a two-stage process through the two different commissions, which is, is a bit cumbersome. But that's just the way that the organization of the ordinances are. So that, that's in response to that. That I think, Mr. Davila, you're right, the way it's written. And that's probably in fact, the way the, the owner would pursue it anyway, that he needs to get both of those approved in order for it to make sense to him to proceed.
But so my point then would be that we would be voting to approve a condition use statement that has these two subject situations being presented as part of the application. That is, the limitation of the height being no more than 19 feet and also approval of the variance. So that's, that's kind of bothersome to me. It, it just, it's not a real clean way of going about this. But my main concern that I raised the last time is the fact that the, this conditional use is really about constructing a building that is significantly larger than what is usually allowed in these situations. 80% of the size of the main residence, to me seems a bit excessive to be a conditional use.
As far as, as far as taking this under consideration, I mean, a council can make, during the motion, we can, we can make any conditions that we, that we so desire. So if planning and zoning made their condition, their, their recommend, their approval, but with conditions, then we can either change that or we can go with that. And, and, and use those same recommendations as planning and zoning has the same conditions. Or we can add more if there's more to it. Yeah, that the size of the building, it, it is, it is quite considerable. And that is, you know, that's something we got to consider. I know last time we were talking about this possibly setting a precedence. But it was pointed out by Mr. Jambo that we already, this would not necessarily be the precedence. We already have a, a building that has been approved that is even larger than this one. So, you know, we have to take, we need to take each one individually. Consider it on its own measure, on its own merits, but we do have accessory conditional use buildings that are larger than this one actually. So, yes, Mr. Davila?
No, I, I believe if I remember correctly, Mr. Jambo said that we have recently approved one that's like 60% the size of the original or the, the main structure and not 80%, 60%. That's, that's smaller. And I would like to point out that from the standpoint of logic, if we've done one that exceeds the 50%. If we've done one that exceeds the fifty percent. That to me, the occurrence of of this occurring one time does not make it a pattern. It's only, you know, one, one other time that this has occurred, to my knowledge at least. So we can't say it's a trend, we can't say it's a pattern, nothing of the sort, it had, it may have happened one time. But if you allow this to happen again, and we are definitely saying, well, forget about the fifty percent, you know, this is a, this is gonna be. Judged on its merits every single time, and so ignore that fifty percent part of the ordinance, that's the way I see it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Yeah, thank you, I I just two of the factors, as I was talking, getting feedback from citizens on on various subjects. There were a couple of things that were pretty clear feedback points from numerous people, which I think are worth sharing with the council. Number one is our ordinances really don't account for this situation where there's multiple lots that have been conjoined together. And certainly to to, the feedback I got anyway, it said it certainly felt like putting something this large on a single standard. Platted lot in the city of Lago Vista would not be appropriate, but given that this is actually three lots that are conjoined. That is a a strong factor to consider, is what I'll say the feedback was, and then the second thing was. So if in fact the the intent, as is shown in the packet of this this resident, is to make it sort of look like a home. So that future homes built on that that back street would would be, you know, it would it would look more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood in the future. One of the suggestions which we might wanna put in as a condition is to actually put a door on the structure so that it looks more like a house from the street side. So those are any two things to consider which we may wanna put in in our in our conditions if we choose to approve it, that's 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 all the feedback for me.
Alright, yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, after I was at the meeting last time, just as a citizen, and I listened, and afterwards I had an exchange with Mr. Jambo via email about this subject. And I had three just off the top of my head that I sent to him, now, they weren't approved in the same manner. But they're very similar in that they are, you know, much larger than fifty percent of the size of the the home. And so and then there was a fourth one I thought of after that, I didn't even bother sending to him. So this is something that is fairly common in Lago Vista, I think there's. There's a commonality about the ones that I've seen, and Mr. Prince pointed out one of them, that is, they're not generally on a. A regular quarter to third of an acre lot, they are on, you know, half acre lots or on a a location where a homeowner has co-joined. Two or three lots in order to, you know, have the room to put that together. I think another thing that's very common is they make sure that the accessory building looks like the home so that it flows well with what's already there. And then there was one other point I wanted to make, and I was hoping that Mr. Prince or Mr. Williams or Mr. Jambo could could talk about this, you know, there was one. Person that dissented asked for this not to happen, and and they talked mainly about a view and and this shouldn't be allowed because of. A view, I went over and drove over, passed on where the building should have been, but also by this person's house that they felt like their view would be obstructed. And and I didn't see where their view would be obstructed, I mean, number one, they have a lot behind them that is full of trees, that's taller than their house practically. And then there's the street, and then it would be across the street, and it gently slopes downward, so I don't believe that their view would be obstructed. But the reason why I was asking maybe the three, one of the three gentlemen to to jump in is I believe P and Z is really pretty. It it's got a set of standards and and how they judge whether or not a view is impacted, what kind of things they take into into account. And I was just curious if the P and Z looked at this one dissenting vote, if you will. And if you guys judge it by your standards and and what conclusion you might have come to.
I'll I'll jump in with my memory and then Mr. Jambo or Mr. Williams add to it or correct if I'm remembering incorrectly. The 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 issue, of course, as the mayor has pointed out, is that the standards for a. For an accessory building are different than the standards would be if it was a home. And so if this were a home, it is being built below the by right limits, so there's there's. You know, a home could be built there at the height this building is going to be built, and there would be no question, it would not even have to come into planning and zone. By ordinance, it's okay to build it that high. I felt like, and we didn't have a lot of extensive discussion about the view. Because it was it was that situation, that this was under the limit of what a a home could be built to. And we have previously discussed in planning and zoning that this ordinance differentiation between the height allowed for outbuildings. Being relative to the ground they're built on, rather than the high point of the lot, where whereas residences are relative to the high point of the lot. That's a somewhat of a, you know, a a little bit of an inconsistency in our ordinance, which we may need to clean up anyway. So I would say we we looked at it, but we decided that it wasn't really a factor, it wasn't blocking view, it wasn't certainly not any more than a home. That would otherwise be built on that lot in in a normal situation.
I just wanna point out real quick, you know, if you if you're looking on page fourteen, you know, it says impact if denied. A similar building with a front door could be built. Running Sagebrush was reestablished. So, you know, the size of this building, yes, it is quite large, but the the resident could go through the expense of. Separating the three lots, you know, so into two and one, and then he could build the exact same house. All he's gotta do is put a front door on it. And then, of course, he would have to run separate utilities, so basically. He could get the exact same house building, it would just have a front door on it, and it would cost him. Thousands of dollars more because of the utility and. And in my mind, if if this is something that can be built anyway. Why, why force, why force the citizen to spend thousands of extra dollars? On utilities and stuff like like that, just just because, you know. So I, to me, to me, the size of the building, you know, if we wanna put a condition on there that. Hey, he hasn't put a door on it, you know, I I'm fine with that, but. I don't, I, to me, I don't think we should make the the resident spend thousands of extra dollars to to complete this building.
One, one slight correction to what you just said, Mayor, is that if this were being built as a house, he would have to do more area that is living space. And less area that is garage space than his current plan.
Basically, the building would be, the size, the building exterior would be pretty much the same.
Exactly, that's that's correct.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Yes, I mean, P and Z, all members of P and Z did go out and look at the property and determine that. It it wasn't going to block a view, but they had also determined that it was less than fifteen feet from the highest point on the lot. So it's pretty much the same height as the house that's currently there. So it wasn't any higher than that, it just is bigger because it's on two lots. And it just seems bigger, but a again, I agree with Paul Prince that we need to adjust the ordinance to address situations. Where someone owns three different lots and puts them together and wants to build something on those three lots.
A minor correction, Mr. Mayor, if I would. It was a, it was a unanimous recommendation from P and Z, there was just a member that was absent. The person that talked about the height was a neighboring property owner that responded with a written comment.
Right, yeah, there was actually no one dissenting, it was just someone that had technical difficulties and couldn't join the meeting, so. But the six that were there was unanimous. Anybody else? Questions, comments, counsel? Alright, the applicant is in attendance, and I would like to ask Mr. Donnelly. To turn his microphone on, and if he would like to address counsel, I will recognize him at this time. Well, maybe he is just logged on and is not actually paying attention. Okay, well, well. I'll get back to Mr. Donnelly if if he if he logs on. Wait, there he is.
Mayor, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, there we go.
Sorry, I'm on my phone. It cut me out for a minute. I I would just like to, y'all have reiterated a bunch of of thoughts that I was already planning on saying. The biggest thing was, it is on three lots, and Mary, you talked about it being the same size as a house that would be on that lot. The comments I'm hearing make it sound huge, and it's it's not that huge, it's big, it's two thousand square foot. But it is on three lots, I'm well under the impervious cover for my lots. And I've gone out of my way to try to make it look like my house, match the house, so it has good presence, I didn't use a metal building. You know, I'm trying to do it the right way, according to way y'all would like to see it done, and I don't wanna offend my neighbors by putting an ugly structure up there. So I'm just asking for consideration, going through the steps, you know, the driveway, we did, I have spoke with Mr. Jambo about that issue. And the driveway can be reduced, that's not a, not an issue, it's just, we haven't gone to the actual building plans yet and turned those in where it is reduced. So when I turned into conditional use permit application, that's what was on there, but all that, that that can be taken into consideration, that's not a big deal. But I'm just asking for consideration, and it's like I said, it's, it sounds big, but to me, it's it's not that big, it's the size of a normal house would be. And I have consolidated the lots, and and like Mayor was saying, if if I did do it as a regular lot and a regular house. You guys know what it costs to run utilities, it's gonna, you know, hundred and eighty-four dollars a a foot for utilities, it's gonna cost another hundred and fifty thousand dollars just tacked on to it. Just for utilities, so just asking all that in consideration, please.
Alright, thank you, does counsel have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Prince.
The one I would ask him is about the 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 idea of the front door, we did not discuss that in planning and zoning, and it was a suggestion from a citizen to me recently. Mr. Donnelly, have you thought about putting a door on the the street side of that building? That would make it look more like a home than the the current elevation plans show, is that, would that be reasonable for you, or something that would be a real hardship?
That's not a problem at all, easy fix.
It it was something I put in the staff report at P and Z, it didn't catch on there, so they didn't, it didn't get mentioned. It it was kind of a personal thing with me anyway, you know.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else on council have questions for the applicant? Alright. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, at this time, the public hearing is open, so I will take comments. From the audience, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage the council to approve this. I think it's good that the council takes into consideration how the rules and the city ordinances apply to the surrounding areas. In this case, it's not a single small lot, it's three lots, and I think that those are mitigating circumstances that warrant. The approval, and there's not gonna be a second meter, which would be in violation of the city ordinance. He's offered to put a door on the front, I think it's a good, a good thing for this homeowner, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience, comments? Yes, Darcy.
Is he under the same thing because he won't have, if he's not running a a utilities out there, then there will be no power to this building, correct? So will it be generator ran, or will it be running off a gap?
Man, utilities will be coming from my current lot, my current residence.
Okay, okay, so you will actually have electricity, you just won't have water, correct?
I'll have water too, water's gonna come from my prime, the lots are consolidated, so I'm just gonna run water lines to the back.
Okay, and and then one of my other questions was, you do know about the dark sky ordinance, right? So you're not supposed to have a bunch of uplights out there?
I love the dark sky ordinance, I don't want any streetlights on my street.
Perfect, then here, here, let's, let's get him on board.
I thank you, Darcy. Anybody else in the audience? Alright, well, I am going to close the public hearing at seven twenty-five PM. And it is now open for council discussion and.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Weatherly.
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit. For twenty-one seven ten Surrey Lane.
Second. But but I I would like the condition to be added that he put a front door on the build. If if since he he didn't seem like he objected to putting a door, I think that would add, make it look the same as the house, so.
Alright, and yes, I was gonna ask for some clarifications also, because as Mr. Davila had read. There were some conditions coming out of planning and zoning, or is it councils? Mr. Weatherly, is it your intention that we include those conditions that P and Z put in there as well? Or are we not going with those conditions, and then, of course, Mr. Williams has made the suggestion. You know, a possible condition, so, yes, Mr. Prince.
I I would request that Mr. Jambo give us some advice on the appropriate language or or suggestion on the language we could use around the driveway. As part of this, as part of this motion.
Yes, sir, as you know from P and Z, we were just making it clear that you didn't have the ability to approve this driveway that was shown in the site plant. And that he has to go get that approval independent of you guys from the Building and Standards Commission. That's what that's about, and and the nineteen, you know, we we, he shows it as being eighteen foot six inches. Above the slab, and you know, we just added the six inches under the assumption that it'll be a. You know, the the ordinance reads that it's measured from the ground adjacent to the slab, so we added that six inches to be safe. And say, look, if if he, if it doesn't make that because it's got an unusual situation at some point. That, you know, he needs to lower the building here and just put that cap on it. Because it, we didn't have enough information to know exactly how it was in relation to the ordinance. And as you gentlemen that were at the P and Z meeting know, that, you know, it's on our agenda for next month. To not just talk about that height and fix that, but also talk about the intent of this ordinance. You know, and emphasize, you know, exactly what the what the 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 purpose is of of these approvals. And and if some of them are inappropriate, to either add them or or correct them, but yeah, that that work will start.
Mr. Mayor. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that the driveway, the condition on the driveway doesn't even need to be, since it's a separate issue.
Clarification, just to make sure nobody misunderstands.
Yeah, but what we're approving the building and irregardless or regardless of that. You know, if he wants a bigger driveway, he's gonna have to go.
Well, it's almost any driveway unless he cuts, he could cut down his driveway on his other, at his house. And have some leftover, but it's a total driveway width, it's limited now. And it's already so close to the existing size, he would only have four feet left over. But without the variance, he could cut down the size of his existing, so that he would have room to put one here.
But Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In our, in our motion, we do not have to mention the driveway at all, correct?
No, it 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 was a comfort level to me, just to make sure that nobody misunderstood when it got down to permitting time. You know, it, I I'll leave it up to Aaron with how important it is, but, you know, we put it in there just to make sure everybody, you know, understands what's going on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Erin.
So you have the authority to include it or not, that's really counsel's choice. The, what would happen procedurally if if you made it conditional is he would have to delay any work on. And pursuing the building construction, any permit for that, until he went through the other process for the driveway. Given the driveways are typically done, constructed after the building's already there, it would seem unnecessary. He he, he's already limited to how he can do the driveway regardless of whether you do the condition. So it's really not an absolute necessity. So, it's really not an absolute necessity to include it, but you, but you can if, if you wish.
Alright, yes, Mr. Davila? You're muted.
Okay, I was gonna make the same suggestion that Aaron just made, and that would be to remove the language that has anything to do with approving a variance from the Building and Standards Commission. Just let it go as the building itself, and then let the chips fall where they may, as far as the width of the driveway later on.
Alright.
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I, I would propose a variation on the motion, that we, that we simply say, with the conditions that it, the overall height is limited at 19 feet above the ground level, which is as the, as the planning and zoning said, so mirror that. And secondly, we would add the condition that a, a front door to look more like a typical house structure would be added. And then take, take Mr. Weatherly's motion with those changes.
Alright. Before I get to that, Aaron, I just need a, I need a legal opinion here.
Yes, sir.
With Mr. Prince being on planning and zoning at the time, and already hearing that, and, and voting on this, is there any, is there any conflict here? It doesn't seem like it, but I just want to make sure.
There's actually not, I looked that up today, I was concerned that he had previously considered that because he did not make a final decision, it was a recommendation, and he's a full-fledged Council member. He can participate in this discussion, it doesn't affect, it's not a conflict of interest under state law.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so, we've had some further discussion, Mr. Weatherly, you've heard some of the discussion, would you care to amend your motion?
I'm willing to amend the motion with the height restriction. I really do not see what a front door is going to do on this house. I, I just can't see what that could accomplish, I, in respect to Mr. Jamboar, this just doesn't seem like something that's necessary, and it's just an added expense. But if this is what the Council feels that we need to put into this, I will allow that to be added to my motion.
Okay, 'cause you can always make the motion however you want, and then if somebody disagrees, they can come back and amend your motion, but.
Well, let's just leave the door out of it, 'cause I, I just truly do not see that that's anything that this gentleman needs to go through as far as an expense. I've been and looked at the property, looked what he's trying to do. It looks to me like he has gone to great lengths to make sure that this looks like his house, that it's going to be something that will fit in with the neighborhood, and it's going to be something appealing to look at. And I truly do not see what a front door is going to change on it. So I will add the height restriction motion from the P&amp;Z, but I do not want to put the door in my motion.
Alright. Mr. Williams, do you still second that?
I don't know. I mean, I, I think the fact that you can see the front of the house, the front of the accessory building, it would give it the appearance of looking more uniform with his house, but I'm not vehemently opposed to not having a front door or anything like that, so.
Well, again, again, this is a basic motion, if there was somebody who would like to amend that basic motion, they can, they have that, that right to do so. I'm just looking to see if there's a second for the basic motion. Alright, not having a second, the motion fails. And so, it is still open for discussion or, 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 or motion.
Mr. Mayor, am I allowed to speak at all?
Uh, not at this time, we've already moved on beyond that. Sorry. We're, we're at Council action at this point, Mr. Donnelly, yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve this application with the condition that it be no more than 19 feet above grade, and that the applicant puts a, a front door on the structure.
Second.
Second. Alright, I have the motion by Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Williams beat Mr. Davila on the second, so. We have the motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Thank y'all very much, thank you, Mr. Donnelly, if you choose to leave us at this point, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank y'all, I appreciate the consideration.
And we will go to Action Public Hearing, item number five on the agenda. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the City Council of the Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map for the property, commonly referred to as 19517 Boggy Ford Road, and consisting of an approximately 12.137 acre portion of the current Tucacani Cove Plan Development District, and here and after to be referred to as Phase One of the Firefly Cove Plan Development District, in order to change various general provisions of Ordinance 07-10-04-04, and to modify the uses and development regulations specifically applicable to the tract formerly designated as CA4. Alright, this was, the public hearing is already open from our last meeting. We have PDD over there off of Boggy Ford Road in behind where the glass, the storage unit and the glass company is located, and they are looking at taking a small portion, 12.137 acre portion of that, putting in a single cove with 20 lots, and developing that as their Phase One. Again, this was all read in last month. Is there any questions or comments from Council on this one, as we get started? Any clarification? Yes, Mr. Prince?
I, I did have a citizen raise to me that they had gone to look at that area and noticed that there were quite a few oak trees in that area. And so, she wanted me to just clarify that the applicant understands our tree preservation ordinances, and and the fact that there will have to be, you know, replacement plans for any trees that need to be removed, and that we ideally try to save our good trees in the city of Lago Vista, so I wanted to pose that. So when it's time for the applicant comments, if he can address that, it would be great.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Williams?
It was also, this development was asked to do the smaller lots first, because they want, there was no, there's no access off of Boggy Ford, so they wanted to make sure that a traffic study was done first before there would be access off of Boggy Ford, so they asked the applicant to begin with the smaller lot construction first.
Yes, and this is gonna require some improvement to Draper's.
Correct.
Is it Cove, Draper's Road, Draper's, whatever Draper's is there? It's gonna require some improvement to Draper's Cove Road, and of course, in their, their entrance, their street into the, into the actual cove that they're developing. And then, yes, before they move on to another phase, they are required to do the traffic impact analysis and stuff, yes? Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
I had a question in a couple of comments, or comment, a couple of questions. The, that all the areas in the original ordinance that were outlined in red are what's being asked to be removed, is that correct?
Well, at Phase One, A, they're being left in place in anticipation of a traffic study. But what they have told us is, other than an amenity center, everything is going to be residential, single-family residential lots only.
So, I, I get that, but in that, the original ordinance, I guess, that established the PDD, it had a variety of
Right.
codices that they
This, this particular ordinance changes that C4A tract only, and just leaves everything else alone until the traffic study's done. And then the, and they can't do anything else until, until then.
But the items that have been highlighted in red, they appear to be removed in the new ordinance, so this new ordinance is what's going to apply to this development of these 20 lots, is that correct?
Yes, yes, this 12, yes, correct.
So, the follow-up question that I have is, is that I believe one of the items they're asking to be removed is that boat and RV storage be shielded. There, I guess they're saying that they don't want that requirement there anymore. And so, I'm assuming that's because these lots are so small that it makes it almost impractical to be able to shield stuff like that, but I would ask the question, on a 40-foot lot, if you're gonna allow boat and RV storage, I mean, what is that gonna look like? And, and that's more of a rhetorical question than it is a real question.
Actually, you know, if you, in the applicants here, but the actual change was, is in the previous approval, boat and RV storage was prohibited, because there was going to be a centralized facility for that. And that's where they were gonna be, that centralized facility goes away, so they were simply going to comply with the Lago Vista standard ordinance as it exists.
Fair enough, and, and I'm just, I know the, the applicants here, I'm just kinda raising these issues, hoping that when it's his time to speak, that he'll, he'll address these issues. And then this, this, this last question I have is maybe kinda geared towards Aaron. I understand that the state passed a law that says that we cannot dictate, as a municipality, we cannot dictate building materials on residential homes. I, I get that, but my question is this, they are currently under a PDD that defines how they have to develop that particular site. And in that, it says that they're gonna develop with 75% masonry. Now, we don't have to agree to remove that, is that correct?
That's correct.
They're, they're asking for changes, and so my only question is, I'm not saying that I want to require them to have 75% masonry, but if they're asking things of us, I don't think it's too much to ask of them, that they maintain 25% masonry, which was our longstanding requirement. And I just wanted to know if it's legal for us to do that in negotiations around the PDD requirements?
You can, you can put requirements in a development agreement, agreed upon by both parties regarding those items, you just can't require it as a blanket in your ordinance.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Marion?
I have actually a few questions, just because I want to make sure that what I read is, is clear, 'cause some things seemed a bit unclear to me, and you, you may have already addressed one, Mayor, but I'm gonna look over here at my notes. So, right now, with this Phase One, that they're, that they're asking to be able to begin with, there won't be an entrance and exit off of Boggy Ford, it will be off of Draper's Cove, but the only way off of Draper's Cove to Lowman Ford is Boggy Ford. Right, so essentially, they'll exit and enter and exit through Draper's Cove, Boggy Ford to Lowman Ford, 'cause there's no other way around it. But I think I heard you say, and this was one of the points of clarification, because it, something that I read in here made me think that perhaps doing this initial Phase One with the 20 lots was going to somehow allow them to circumvent the, the traffic study, but I think I heard you say that for sure they will have to do a traffic study before they do anything further past Phase One, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I also saw, and again, you may have already addressed this, but I also saw in the packet that it said that the the, the part in, in the initial, I guess, the word is escaping me, proposal, also included multifamily residences, so is that no longer a part of this project at all? Even in the long term, everything is going to remain single-family?
That, that is what the applicant has shown us, yes, and we have no, and, and we've actually seen preliminary concept plans for the entire thing, and there was nothing but single-family, it's just a variety of single-family sizes.
Okay, and then I think I also saw that the average home size was gonna meet the Lago Vista minimum size requirement of 1,200 square feet, but that there will be an absolute minimum of 1,000 square foot for some number of homes in this development?
1,100.
1,100?
1,100, 1,100.
Actually, I think, I think that's the current minimum for Lago Vista, I think the, the ordinance says 1,000, if I'm not mistaken.
But this community is saying that the average minimum size will be at, at least at 1,100, no larger.
It'll be much higher than that, but I'll let them address that.
Okay. And then Kevin already mentioned the 25%, which, yes, I understand that the state, the new state requirements for those are prohibiting us, but still some interest in maintaining that.
Way it reads is we can't either adopt an ordinance that says that, or enforce an ordinance that says that, either one.
And then I think I also read, and this might have been where you were going earlier, Mayor, although, yes, they will have to make some improvements to Draper's Cove, but I also read that when this whole thing comes to fruition at some point in the future, there will also be some improvements to Boggy Ford, right? A widening of the road and a turn, dedicated turn lane, did I read that correctly?
That's certainly anticipated, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a definite just yet, but that's what the traffic impact analysis will tell us.
Okay, yeah, I would, yeah, I would think it would be anticipated, 'cause it's only a two-lane street, and at some point, if there's 300 homes there, we're talking possibly hundreds of cars, right? Okay, I think those, that's all the questions I have for now, thank you.
Alright, yeah, I was looking, I still see 1,100 in the, 11, minimum 1,100 in the ordinance.
Oh, you're right, I think, I think you are right, come to think of it. I think it, I think it was another development that has 1,000, I was comparing it to.
Okay. Alright.
Other PDD in town that's 1,000. I'm mixing them up.
Alright, Mr. Davila, do you have your hand up?
Yes, Mayor, I, I think the, in the last presentation that was made by the developer, with respect to the exterior finishes, I believe that they said that they were going to make an attempt to maintain the 75% masonry that they had proposed earlier. I, I don't think that we can hold them to that, but I believe that, if I remember correctly, that was what was stated in the last presentation.
Well, if nobody has any more actual questions for staff, then I have Mr. Gasta. I can see him, am I pronouncing it right, Gasta? You can unmute yourself and, and join in on the conversation and present to Council.
Hey, thanks, sir, appreciate it. I do have our civil engineer tonight, Nick Sandlin, with me, and also I do have our civil engineer tonight, Nick Sandlin, with me and also um, our development director, Luke Costa. In order, in no particular order, because I don't want to, I want to be fair to all, um, I'll just answer these as, as they came at me. We did do some clearing um, per, with, with the cities, under the city's rules. City came out and inspected, told us what we could do, tag the trees that they, that they thought were within the ordinance, ordinance, and then counted them, and then we, uh, we cleared around all of those. We cleared the trees and the cedars mainly for that reason, to see which clusters or which trees we could, we wanted to save or which we could adjust lots, you know, why, why the trees in the middle of a lot and we can, we have both 40s and 50s. We could switch up some of those and perhaps keep some of those. And that's really why we wanted to clear. If you get it all approved and you go out there then, and you go, wow, if I'd have been out here before, I'd have, I'd have tried to save those or do, do something different. So um, the trees that are out there are tagged and the city knows about them and we're following that ordinance. And right now, until we, until we submit our construction plans, uh, we'll, we don't know what we're doing with any of those, but we are trying to preserve as many as we can. I think, Mr. Mayor, I think I'll answer these and then go back. Or do you want to?
I'll go right, go right ahead.
As far as Draper's Cove, yes, that is the only access for these 20 lots. We will make improvements to Draper's Cove um, down to the entrance to these 20 lots. We will not be doing any intersection improvements or revisions until the T, until and if the TIA includes those in our PDD in our second PDD amendment for the rest of the project. The TIA Alliance has been engaged to prepare the TIA. I know they did counts all last week and they're complete. We fully expect the report to be, I would say sometimes next week, but next week's only three days for most people. So could, could roll over, but in fact, we've completed 80% or 90% of what they have to do. And um, subsequent to that, they just have to generate the report. We'll state that they did meet with Eric in the city and possibly Roy prior to, to performing the, the analysis. And so it's not just us doing what we want to do. Uh, we did it in conjunction with the city and you'll have it soon. And we're looking forward to moving forward. One note of entrance regarding that is will there be improvements on Boggy Ford? And I think the simple answer is the traffic count alone will, will state whether those are required or needed. And whether we can have no access to Boggy Ford outside of Draper's or whether it's better or worse. Those are all things for the traffic engineer that we've, when we met with them, we said, this is what we want to know. You know, how far away from Lowman, there's all those factors that they tie into it. Boat RV parking, I think it's in, it's easiest to just say at this point in time, we just said this phase will follow the city's ordinance. We may have something different in, in the PDD um, revisions that we bring in next. But I can tell you that on our first phase of 20 lots, we have five different floor plans that we're proposing um, or that we will build. We have 40 foot wide and 50 foot lock, wide lots. So we can take a 40, a house that fits on a 40, that's 30 wide, move that to a 50. There will be an upcharge for that to the customer, but then the customer will then have sufficient side yard to park an RV or boat or all those other toys we all love to have. We've also taken one of the houses that fits on a 50. We have three houses that fit on 40s, two that fit on 50 foot wide lots. One of the houses that fits on the 50 foot wide lots is only 34 foot wide specifically to allow for boats and RVs to be parked in the side yard or the rear yard, depending on the lot. So we're, I think, as cognizant as a city of, you know, what we're, what we don't want to have is front yards full of on small lots, full of boats and jet skis and all those things. And I use every one of them, so. I'm not discriminating. Uh, multifamily, no, we have none planned. We don't think this is proper location for that. So no, it's all single family, 40 foot lots up to larger estate lots and everything in between. The five planes that we have developed for the first 20 lots, one is just over 1,100 square feet. The biggest one is 2,500 square feet, kind of everything in between. We're looking more, we design our houses more for who we think the buyers are going to be. And so we have two small houses in that 1,200 square foot range, both two stories. One has a master down that's, that's appealing to a retiree with a, with a guest room and a study upstairs. The other's a true family plan, a true family, family plan with all the, all the bedrooms upstairs. And, and tho- those two groups, we think are largest buyer profile. I could go on, but we're looking to follow or looking to comply. And no, this isn't going to be a community of, um, you know, very tiny houses. I know one council member, Ms. Marion, um, it's not the average is going to be 1,100 square foot. That's the minimum. So the average in the first phase is, we think if you came back to us three years from now or four years from now, I would bet heavily that the average square footage would be someplace between 1,800 and 2,200. It's, it's what's currently the heart of the market here. It's, it's the heart of the market for a long time in a lot of communities. And the 75% mason requirement, we had discussion about that. And I think, well, my answer was, um, uh, we have some masonry in the first phase, depending on which of the three elevations the home buyer wants. And we mix those up so that we get some of all of them. But that 75% masonry on houses on 45 foot or 40 foot lots, it's not giving you the benefit you think because you've got houses that are 10 feet apart. And to put, I mean, you can, everybody put, what you put down there, you put your, your meters, your trash cans, your air con or a, or a C condition, uh, air conditioner coils. I mean, that's whatever goes down everybody's side lot and we're proposing to have, we just, we develop it. So all of that from your meter panels to everything is on one side of the house. And then hopefully the other two, because we build every house, we can change it so that the two between the houses both have the five foot clear on one side and keeps the meters on the opposite side. So it allows us to plan a little better because we build every house. I think I touched on everything that I wrote down anyway, but I'm an old guy, so um, I would tender it back for questions.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gasta, it's, I was the one that asked the question about the masonry requirement. If we were to require 25% masonry, would that be onerous to you and your plans?
Short answer would be yes. Um, we have, on this first phase, it would be onerous. I think you will see us in phases with estate lots or larger lots when we get into the 60s, that we will do that on our own. And it could be, and there it's viable. On the small lots, we're trying to, our price points are, are 199 to 360. And it's the bottom end that we're trying to uh, keep in that price range. I have, it may be of interest to you and you could, you, Roy may have sent it to you or you should, you can certainly collect it from Roy. We plotted all the sales by square footage and price um, from 2018 through current and put those on a nice scatter graph, a couple graphs, one's a scatter graph, and then it shows where we're going to be. See that why we are a little bit on the low end of things. We're definitely in the heart of the market. And then the second graph does a bar chart that plots them and makes it real easy to see just where exactly people in your community, both new and resale are buying. And once you get above 400, it tapers down pretty quick. It's about 12% of your market. So.
I, I'm a real estate agent, so I'm really pretty familiar with the, the statistics and I agree with you, you're, you guys are in the heart of the market. And I totally understand your desire to get that um, low price point to around 200. I get it. If, if, if you were required to have the 25% masonry, what do you think the low end of your price point would then have to end up being?
You just said 25%. Did you mean?
Yeah, I, I, I have no desire whatsoever to require 75%. But before the state changed the law, our requirements were 25%. And so I'm just curious, you know, if, if we, it, when we approve this, if we say we're going to approve it, but we will only approve it if you would agree to 25% masonry on your products. Number one, would that be onerous if it was only 25%? And two, um, well, how, what would your low end price point be if we did require you to have the 25%?
Long question, just because um, you know, we have 300 houses planned. And I think on average to say, would we have 25% masonry requirement? I would say, I would, we would, we would certainly consider that. But to say it on every house seems to dictate the architecture more. One of the popular plans that exists out here, exists in the hill country is just your typical white farmhouse with, with a metal roof over the porch. All of our houses have front porches in the small lots for sure. But, but it didn't say, well, you need to go add masonry to that house also, just to get 25% masonry on the house isn't conducive to the architecture. I would, I would say that, you know, we would make up for that when our hill country. And I would try to combine masonry with stucco and call both of those hard surfaces. And we would have a fairly easy way of, of, you know, satisfying our 25%. On that house specific, specifically, it would be more. And then that would, of course, bring our average up with the farmhouse.
Right. Um, I'll make just one last comment and then I'll leave you be. I totally get, you know, you've got your plans and so forth, but do recognize you're coming to us with a PDD that dictates you have to do 75%. So you're asking for us to give you something and I'm totally down with doing that. But, but it's not unusual for us to ask for something in return. That's the only comment I would make. Thank you so much for all your responses, Mr. Gasta.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Davila.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to a couple of things that were brought up by Mr. Sullivan. First of all, the ordinance that we have in place now does not have anything, does not state any requirement for masonry. What it does say is the requirement is 65% of approved products, masonry being one of them. Okay, now, in the 20, oh, let's see, 2019 legislative session, they removed all those requirements. However, in the, in the aftermath of that, it was determined that the, the requirement, uh, the removal of, of any such requirement brought about some unintended consequences. One of them was to allow anything which included cedar shake site. And so it's been noted that cedar shakes, either whether you're using it as a roofing material or a side, uh, you know, using it on the sides of a home, they start out okay because they're impregnated with something that makes them harder to target. But after some time, that goes away. So I would expect that in the next legislative session, that that will probably change. Uh, and it'll go back to some, some requirement um, that will, it'll allow cities to have requirements that are more in line with what used to be the case. Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Anybody else questions for the applicant and council? Yes, Ms. Marion.
I, I was just wondering if, um, and I don't see, no, there you go. Mr. Gasta, if you have an idea when it's all said and done about how many different floor pa, floor plans folks would have to choose from when considering the entire development?
Oh, I mean, I can, I can, all my answers, all your questions are good and make all my answers long. Or, um, so, you know, if I had to say how many would we end up with, my guess is in the end it'll be 15 or 20. We do things a little differently than most builders. One, we're not public, we're private. But we also have a slew of neighborhoods all over the, all over the Southwest that are on the website to, that can attest to the different architectures and the different parts of town. With the estate lots, which are the large lots, and if you go into communities that have not done so well in the past, in the last downturn, you know, there are a lot of lots out there that you can buy that are 100, excuse me, 150 foot wide and 200 feet deep and what's called estate lot, large. The problem is all those, a lot of those are downhill, uphill. You know, so thick with trees, you don't know what you can do on those. Uh, on our estate lots, we will sell those to customers, but we will also have a myriad of plans that they can build on those houses. The good thing is, is I don't know how many house, house types we've built, but we've probably got 20 or 25 that we've selected that would, we think would fit and clarify. We have to re-elevate because times. You know, the Tuscan look is no longer preferred. So I mean, we've got houses that go up to 6,000 square feet and we can adapt those to many of those lots. And we will, the thing we provide to them is we say, here's a lot, you buy it. Here's a house, and if you like that house, here are the specs and here's the price. It's a similar to a weekly build on your lot program or Bron or any others that do that. But the best thing we do is we say, here's, here's a house that go on downhill and yeah, you're going to need a tall slab, but we'll give you a fixed price. And um, so we hope in the end to build most of the estate lots with our product and our plans. And once we go from phase one to phase two, we'll add additional plans at the higher level that would fit on 60 foot lots. So that's, that's a very evasive political answer, but I've learned that in the last three months.
Mr. Gasta, um, Mayor Tidwell here. Um, how many phases are we looking at eventually? Is it just two phases or?
We have currently under, in, in the plan that you'll see from us, we have one A, then there'll be a one B, which is about another 40 lots in the area where one A is. Um, and then we got phase two, which is probably another 110 lots. And then phase three is more towards the water down Draper's Cove. And um, that's the third bit, the third and last phase.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at the colored map, but I, and I saw they were numbered, but I just wasn't real sure if those corresponded with the phases.
Oh, you're correct.
All right. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a question for Roy. In the packet, it talked about um, a potential alternative recommendations. And A was to approve both the concept plan and the detail plan. And B, only the concept plan. I was hoping that, um, Mr. Jim Bor could help us understand just what exactly that means. What the two different plans are and what we would be approving if we did both and what we'd be approving if we only did one.
In regards to phase one A, I don't know what else we could ask for as being meeting, needed to be meeting the requirement for the detail plan according to our now two step version of the ordinance we have. The reason is because it's single family residential and quite frankly, they've done most of the work for the preliminary plat. I mean, there's just not much else left to do other than construction plans. We even uh, put them through the ordeal of making sure that they had the water quality model thought out for the entire acreage so that they didn't paint themselves in a corner in phase one A because we made them do phase one A only. You know, we were worried that that might cause them to hurry up too much and we made sure that doesn't happen uh, by looking at future phases and how the water quality and the drainage plan is going to work. I, we don't know what else could be done. It was just, like I said, we, we try and put every conceivable alternative in there. And if somebody found a detail that they thought was missing, that's certainly a possibility that you could pass it that way. But the staff is not aware of what else is, anything that is missing.
So you would be comfortable tonight if we were to approve both the concept?
Absolutely, right. If, we asked them for, for everything under the sun, as they'll tell you. We were not shy about making them think this thing out through to the end, even for this phase 1A. Okay, we're, we were pretty aggressive in that regard. We wanted, this thing had a lot of what we thought might be, you know, mind traps laying around in, in the old ordinance. And we made sure we understand how those were going to be solved before we even got to this stage. And they, they suffered through it, but they, they did it and did it well.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Anyone else on council? Yes, Mr. Prince.
Um, Mr. Gosta, I think a minute ago, if I understood you right, you said in phase 1B, there would be, I believe it was 40 units. When, when we see at some time in the future, phase 1B, would you expect that to look similar to this plan in terms of the size of the units and the size of the lots? Or will that be materially different?
Uh, two answers, one, there'll be introduction of estate lots and part of phase two or one B. I also think there'll be the addition of some 60-foot lots in one B. One of the other reasons we cleared was that we could get a look at what our views are. You know, there, there are a lot of trees out there and a lot of dirt. And when you start to take them down, you go, oh, look, we, we can see the water. So I think, I think we'd add, you know, a few estate lots and some 60s and maybe even a little bigger lot also. One of the reasons for asking to do 1A was, or a project prior to the TIA was so that we could actually get in the market and see what the buyers requested. The whole concept of, our, our research has said over time that 80% of customers that buy homes won't buy a lot, hire an architect and build a home with a contractor for a myriad of reasons, financial and the horror stories they've heard were the two main ones. And so what we try to do with our plans on your estate lot, and we, we currently purchased an additional 10 lots in Lago Vista to offer that program up starting in the next couple of weeks. And so I think, you know, we'll, we'll see a lot more diversity in the product as we get into 1B.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if council's through, this is a public hearing. So I will turn it, I will recognize members of the audience that have questions and comments. I see Dorsey's hand up.
Hello, um, Council, I think this is going to be towards Dirk God's, Godset, Godsta? Is that how you pronounce it?
Uh, any way you like, but Gazda Mazda works.
Okay, I, I like to pronounce people's names properly. So here, here are a few of my questions and I'll, I'll let you get through it. And first off, I'd like everybody to say, I wasn't the only one, I guess, up with trees. And I'm glad somebody came to Paul and, and pointed that out. And I'd just like to let you know that one single tree can add from $1,000 to $10,000 onto a property. And it can also average up to nine to 12% if you have mature trees on your property. So those are a good thing to keep if you possibly can, especially since out here it takes a long time. I mean, you see how our landscaping is, once you clear the trees, it becomes like a desert wasteland. So I appreciate that you're trying to keep those switched off. So I wanted to start with a good thing. And then I was going to ask you, will your homes be in an HOA?
The short answer, the short answer is, yeah, no, the short answer is yes. With phase two will also come an amenity area at this point in time. What's in our plan is a large pool area with deck, barbecues, a pavilion and bathrooms sighted on a lot that, that hopefully has views of the water or is integral to the community. That's, that's going to dictate an HOA.
And, and then my second question is, are your homes going to be opened up to investors to make them into short-term rentals? Because that's a big problem. And that's a big problem down in Point Venture for homeowners down there. And a lot of times people will put in these subdivisions and then they'll open them up to investors. And then they'll come and snap up six, seven, eight of them and turn them all into short-term rentals. So I'm wondering how you're going to prevent some of that.
Uh, good question, and I'm not sure I have a good answer. I'm not sure I have a good answer because I've seen evolution of that from, no, I don't want it to, well, maybe a little bit. Well, maybe we should control it. So I don't know, we don't, we typically haven't allowed short-term rentals. But I, it, it just appears to me that the world's going in another direction. The, the only hesitancy I have is that we for, at one time bought a property called Kissing Camels. It's a garden of the gods club up in Colorado Springs. It was owned by the and, um, that's a community that's, that when we bought it, two-thirds was built out. And the 550 houses that existed there were largely the people of my age and above. And they didn't want any change. And especially short-term rentals, because we're going to have people partying and making noise. So where I diverse, where I divert from that somewhat is that, you know, three years ago, I would have said, no, never. Until I spent the summer of COVID, wandered, we were under, my wife and I wandered around Colorado with my kids going from Airbnb to Airbnb. And one of those was back in Kissing Camels, which the average price of the house, probably $100,000. But those old folks said, we understand this. So they, you know, they got together and said, let's establish some rules, asked to be for a week. Limitations on occupants, how many? And so personally, I sit on the fence. And, um, I think you set some good rules, it's probably not that bad a thing.
Yeah, yes, and thank you for that. Because some of those good rules are that you can't have three short-term rentals in a row. Or you can't, you know, so, and I do short-term rentals since I was a kid. So I actually love them. I do them all over the world. So I, I, I'm actually for them, but in a controlled situation. And then my third and last question was, we have a big trash problem up here. And we have a big trash problem with contractors. And this is something that you're going to see a hot topic on. People up here are sick of contractors building these homes and the trash going all over the place. And nobody cleans it up. And they only come and do it maybe once a month and it's overflowing and then it's blowing all over the place. So I, I just want you to know as a, as a builder, that someone, I'm finally getting to talk to an actual builder up here, that if, if you want to make nice neighbors, keep your place clean. And, and that's probably going to go really far with when you're dumping stuff, when you're bringing stuff in. That, you know, have someone once a week go around, clean up. And, and, and you're going to probably get a lot of neighbors that come up to you and thank you and tell you, oh, we can't wait for the rest of your plan. But if you treat us like trash, they're going to treat you back like trash. And I just want you to know that. So thank you.
Fun note, we're the only builder, so we have no excuse. So Tyvax blowing down the street, it's not the other builders, it's ours. I think we'll do a better job just because of that. But the wind does blow sometimes.
Yes, I understand, thank you. I, I property manage, so I understand.
All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing at 8:19 PM. And we are open for motion and council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think this is something our community really needs. And I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the city of Council of Lago Vista amending the official zoning map for the property commonly referred to as 19517 Boggy Road, Boggy Ford Road.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Weatherly and second by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the ordinance passes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gosta.
Thank you very much.
And if you choose to leave us at this point, have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Same to you, have a, have a great one, we appreciate it.
Sure. All right, so I believe that is the items where I have outside guests that need to speak and everything. So I'm going to go back to agenda item number three. And this is, let me see, where is my paper? Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number 20-1857. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, providing for the election of a mayor pro temp. So this is done every year following our general elections. We've had that, we have everybody in attendance now. And tradition is seniority. Each year, the, the council member that is, has not served as mayor pro temp and has the most seniority. It's, is recognized as the next candidate for mayor pro temp. And that is where we are at right now. Is there any questions or comments from council? No, anybody in the, yes, Mr. Weatherly?
The only thing I would say is that being mayor pro temp has been interesting. And I'm very glad to hand it off to Mr. Davila.
All right, anybody from the audience? Yes, Dorsey.
Hi, is, is Arch been there? Sorry, uh, council member Dalva, Dalva, Dalva La? And Dave, council member Williams, excuse me. Did they not come on at the same time? I thought they were both elected in the same year. So, so how do you adjust that? I mean, I'm glad Arch is getting it, but how do you adjust that?
Well, so far Arch has not been, there's been no motion to nominate Arch. But Mr. Williams was my mayor pro temp in 2017. No, 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 18. I'm sorry, Suzanne Bland was my mayor pro temp in 18. Mr. Williams was 19, Mr. Weatherly is 20. And if there are no further questions, then I would like to make the motion that we accept Mr. Arch Davila as the next mayor pro temp.
I'll be second.
All right, I have, I've made the motion and it was seconded by Mr. Weatherly. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, Mr. Davila is now the mayor pro temp. Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Davila did not make any comments, so I'm assuming he's willing to accept the nomination.
Yes, yes, sir, I am. I'd like to make some statement now, if I may.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, Mayor, before taking this position, this position of mayor pro temp has been well-served by my friends, David Williams and Dick Weatherly. I applaud them both and hope to do the same admirable job that they've done. I welcome back Kevin Sullivan and welcome our newest council members, Shalane Marion and Paul Prince. I take great pleasure in serving our community and I expect that our newest members of council will find this a challenging yet rewarding experience. I challenge everyone on council today to search for initiatives that will make our beautiful Lago Vista an even greater place to live. Thank you, Mayor Tidwell, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to serve as your mayor pro temp.
Awesome, thank you.
Well said.
All right, now we'll go into our action items. Number six, discussion. And, uh, discussion and possible action regarding an application to the city council for a variance in the maximum height and size of an attached wall sign in a C2 zoning district at Suite 100 of 4712 Lowman Ford Road Lot Room, Silver Tech subdivision. The particular sign is attached to the wall above the canopy over the entry to the new convenience store, Lago Vista Express. That is the retail center nearing completion at the northwest corner of Lowman and Boggy Road. It will be the only sign for this establishment on the property. Although the sign is backlit, the design is compliant with dark skies regulations, so long as it is, so long as it is operated in accordance with the specified curfew requirements. It is similar in height, size and location to the attached wall signs within the Lago Vista Retail Center at the southwest corner of Lowman Ford and 1431. Building and Standards Commission unanimously recommended approval of the variance at the regular meeting on November 4th, 2020. All seven members were present, but one abstained. All right, so everybody knows this is the new Chevron station right there at the corner. It says on here nearing completion. I haven't been there yet, but is it complete? Uh, I did notice the liquor store had an open sign on it, though at least the liquor store there is open. I don't know if it's open or not, but anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I went by today and they're obviously doing training and stocking the shelves inside the store. They may be a few days from opening, but they're not very far.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the C store is actually ready, the, the hood is not. They're not going to be able to use the hood because it hadn't been inspected yet. But they have a CO for everything except that. I don't, I don't think they'll be able to sell you any hot food. But other stuff is, is ready. I wasn't aware of the, the liquor store being ready, but I'll check.
All right, well, I know that's off, off the actual agenda item. We're considering the sign, not whether they're open or not, but sorry for that. Yes, Mr. Prince.
I did notice, and, and I think this was Mr. Weatherly's comment as well, that there is a banner up above the liquor store. And it looks like that banner is, is a, you know, a picture of what they intend to do as the permanent sign. And so I don't know, Mr. Jambo, if you or anybody from your team has actually seen that. I'm curious as to whether that is the actual size of what will ultimately be on the building. It seems to me that it, it might be.
We have not, and, and that's actually not permitted to put up that banner. So I will make sure they're aware it can't be there.
I suspected that might be the case.
And, and actually, when we get to the next agenda item, number seven, that's the sign for the liquor store. So right now, we're, right now, we're looking at the sign for the convenience store. And then the next item is for the liquor store. So I don't see a picture or anything on the, let me see, there's, is there a picture of it? A star? That's the company name.
Near the end of this section of the packet should be the picture of the sign.
Oh, okay, yeah, I looked at the sites and everything.
Yeah, it's actually a photo montage of the building with the, the new signs superimposed.
Okay, there it is, I see it.
Mayor, it's on page 104.
Yeah, looking at. Yeah. Okay. Cool. Anybody else, council, questions?
Looks pretty good.
Wow. Anybody from uh, the audience have a comment? Yes, Dorsey.
Hello, Mayor. Uh, I had a question. So these signs are basically just on the front of the building that where the gas station part actually is. They're not facing Loman Ford. It, do we have a stipulation on actually what they can put on Loman Ford? You know, as like a big neon sign or, or anything like that? Do we have an ordinance? So, you know, will it be tasteful? And it won't be like blinding as you're coming down Loman and you can't see the green light anymore?
Yes, there will be, there will be nothing, there will be nothing on Loman.
It's not already there.
Yeah.
Okay.
This will be the only sign.
Thank you.
If they change their mind, they're going to have to come back to this council.
Yes, Mr. Dabila.
So just to be clear, there is a sign already there on Loman. It's the one where it announces a gas station, shows your prices and things like that. You noticed Mr. Jambo said there won't be any signs other than what's already there. So if you drive by, there is a sign there on Loman.
Right. Those are both permitted and uh, comply with the ordinance. They didn't need a variance.
Anybody else? All right, if that's everything, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the uh, sign for Laguna Vista Express as shown in the diagram. And uh, discuss. So for the variance of maximum height and the size of the attached wall sign in a C two zoning district at Suite one hundred of four forty-seven twelve Loman Ford Road Lot One.
All right, thank you. I have the motion and I have a second by Mr. Davila. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Hearing none, the sign variance is granted. Unanimous. All right, number seven. Discussion and possible action regarding an application to the city council for a variance in the maximum height and size of an attached wall sign in a C two zoning district at Suite two hundred of forty-seven twelve Loman Ford Road Lot One in the Silver Tech subdivision. And this is the one for Boggy's Liquor. Questions, comments? Again, it is very similar to all the signs in other retail centers here in Laguna Vista. Yes, Miss Marion.
So I, I heard you just say that it's, it's similar to, to the size of signs um, in other retail areas or other, for other retail businesses. It just looks really big. Maybe it's just the picture? But it's, it looks like this, the, the size of the actual business itself, um. Is that the picture that's in the packet, is that really pretty close to the size that the sign will be when it's all said and done?
On the, the one that is a photo montage is, now the one on the, the building elevations that was generic, that, that one is not. That was just me showing you the, the whole building, if you will, to see what it looks like in context, because the photo montage is a close-up. And you, you don't get the overall feel of the building size.
Yeah. Like one nineteen, one nineteen is the whole building. One twenty is the actual photo.
And, and, and the size, uh, the size is in the packet and it's on there. You know, it's this, this.
I guess the picture just looks huge.
This one's only about sixty square feet. And, and so, that's somewhat of an exaggeration, because there's holes, you know, in the upper part of the length. You know, if you were to take all that out, it would be even less. But we, we just pretend it's square or rectangular.
All right. Paul, Mr. Prince.
I believe it was pointed out in the last meeting that our ordinances have some, some things that probably need to be addressed that uh, if this, instead of this sign saying Boggy's Liquor, it said something like Starbucks, that they could by right make it this large. Uh, so if it's a nationally recognized uh, brand name, then our ordinances say it's okay to build a pretty large sign, but since this is a unique local name, our ordinances require them to ask special permission. So I'll say that, number one, to say I think this is a reasonable size, and number two, I think the, the commission, Mr. Jambo already um, has, has had feedback that the commission recognizes this probably needs to be updated in our ordinances.
Yeah, but to, uh, actually, a, an ID or a logo can be more than twice this size. And, and without any height limitation at all.
Somebody else? All right, anybody in the audience, comments? All right. If that is all, I will entertain a motion for number seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I move that we, that the city council approved the application for a variance in the maximum height and size of the attached wall sign in C two zoning district at Suite two hundred of forty-seven twelve Loman Ford Road Lot One, Silver Tech subdivision.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Hearing none, the variance is granted unanimously. Number eight. Discussion and possible action regarding an application to the city council for a variance to allow the use of an eight-foot-high, thirty-two-square-foot freestanding sign with a minimum fifteen-foot front yard setback for a permitted model home at nineteen ninety and Boggy Ford Road Lot twenty forty Highland Lake Estate, Section Two. Uh, okay. This application, this is for a right to include the sign for a permitted model home a temporary sales office similar to those, to others that exist within our city limits, including one that's approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet to the east, which I believe would be the Waterloo Bronn Home property. Uh, the ordinance specifically authorizes, authorizing the use of a model home as a temporary sales office includes an acknowledgement that signs in accordance with other requirements can be included. It is less clear with that, what those requirements might be. Uh, as a result, the staff prefers that a variance application be filed when a def- definitive determination is unavailable. All of the similar signs permitted for model homes were only approved after this type of variance was obtained. Although the sign includes some very limited backlighting, the design is compliant with our dark sky regulations, so long as it is operated in accordance with the specified curfew and dimming requirements, which have been sent to the applicant. It also meets all of the design standards and limitations for a sign in the C one, which is professional business office, low-density retail zoning district. The Building and Standard Commission unanimously recommended approval of the variance at the regular meeting on November fourth, with the clarification that the applicant's site plan indicates at least a fifteen-foot yard front yard setback. Questions, comments from council? Yes, Mr. Prince.
Uh, two questions, and, and, and Mr. Gasta is still with us, because this is his, uh, his uh, model home that's going in here, or sales place, sales location. So, question I think is really for him. Number one, in planning a zoning, I actually made the motion of the fifteen-foot setback. Uh, to be frank, that was fairly, that was fairly arbitrary number, but you know, the, the spirit of the, the motion was to make sure the sign was not too close to Boggy Ford. So first question for Mr. Gasta or his team to address is, had they verified that a fifteen-foot setback is, is appropriate, and you know, it's not going to mean the sign bumps into the front wall of the house or something. So I'd like feedback from them if they have it. Second question, uh, I had in, uh, feedback from citizens asking uh, how long their, their intention is to use this uh, location as a sales location. Uh, at, at some point, will they move their model home and sales location inside the PDD that we discussed earlier this evening? Or will they stay out in this location? So how, how long should we expect this uh, to be this way before it's returned to a residential property?
Hello, this is Luke Gasta. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, I don't have my video on. My computer tends to hum with all these cameras and microphones going, so got to keep it off, but um, to answer your first question, Mr. Prince, we haven't, we haven't gone in the field and looked at what a fifteen-foot uh, distance from the right-of-way line is. I'm not entirely sure exactly where the right-of-way line falls. If we were to say fifteen feet from the pavement, I think we're very comfortable with that. I think that's perfectly fine by us. But it's my understanding that the, the right-of-way line is probably another ten feet from the back of pavement. Um, and that may push us towards towards the front door of our model or sales office, where it's, it doesn't make sense, but understanding that the intent here is to keep it away from the road, uh, we don't have a problem with that at all. In our, in our initial site plan that we submitted, we had the location of the sign, like, adjacent to our driveway. And if, if we have a fifteen-foot requirement, we'll probably want to shift that sign laterally along Boggy Ford, because pushing that sign deeper into our lot will cause it to be blocked by cars parking in our driveway. And so we'll want to push that east or west to make it more visible, but fifteen feet sounds reasonable to us. Um, your second question, we haven't we haven't pinned down the exact date on when we plan to move out of the sales office and into a model, but we fully intend to build models within Firefly Cove. Whether that's in Phase One A or One B is to be determined. It's probably going to be in the first phase. Uh, the timing of those phases, uh, we, we expect homes to start going up sometime next summer in Phase One A. And we can perceive probably a, a model being up and running in the second half of twenty twenty-one. So the timing here of being in this location is probably around a year, maybe eighteen months to give us some, some buffer room.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, uh, council. Anybody else on council? Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a question to the Gazdas as well. I, I, in the recommendation, it talked about the fifteen-foot setback, but it also talked about a five-foot height limitation. Uh, in looking at that, the, the Waterloo sign that's, you know, just up the road, it looks like it is a little bit taller than five feet. Um, and so I was just curious if the Gazdas are comfortable with a five-foot height limitation, or if they were looking for something a little bit more than that.
Um, I think our biggest concern here is the square footage of the sign to maximize the display for the traffic that's going along Boggy Ford. Um, the height of the sign is, is not our priority, so I think a five-footer at six foot would probably be nice, because our, the height of our sign, if you don't include the legs of the sign, I think is around four feet is how we modeled it. Um, so if we had a five-foot height limitation, that would almost be sitting on the ground.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know what bronze height is, or what, what the dimensions of those their sign is, but we we're, we're not trying to do anything out of the ordinary and, and would do something similar to what they have.
Yeah, six foot does seem reasonable. Uh, you mentioned, um, the size of the sign and square footage. Did you have a, an idea in mind as far as how you, large you want it to be square foot-wise?
Yeah, we were applying for a thirty-two square foot, which I think is in line with your ordinance for this, for a C two zoning district.
Yeah, I don't think you have to have a variance for thirty-two.
No, we're not applying for a variance on the square footage. We're really just applying for the variance of having a sign, since this is a residential property.
Sure, got it. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, yes, Mr. Prince.
Uh, just to clarify, I don't remember, uh, planning a zoning actually specifying a maximum of five feet, and I was trying to read in the notes here. Um, my memory was only about the setback being the only limitation. There's something in the notes about, uh, uh, you know, five feet being the way you could interpret their drawing, but I don't think that was a constraint recommendation for planning.
It was not. You're correct. The, that, that is simply, that is the, what they did is they had a sign drawn to a certain scale, and then they modified the height without modifying the drawing. And we just said, i- if anybody looks at the sign and says, yes, that's perfect, we wanted to make sure they understood the application and, and the drawing weren't exactly the same for the height.
Right.
But that, yeah, that's just something the staff noted. It didn't stick at, at Building and Standards.
Right, so there was no constraint around height, other than the standard constraint of it, it can't go above eight feet, which would be the standard constraint on a sign of this size.
That is correct. And, and once again, that is in line with, if this were a C one property, that would be a height by right.
Yeah, the picture is kind of misleading, because you got the gentleman standing next to the sign, but you look at the, they, it's been circled in red, and it shows the legs to be four feet, uh, even though they appear to only be one feet, and then the sign itself is four feet, so it's actually eight feet high, but yeah, the picture on one thirty-three is a li- a little misleading with the shadow there.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this is Luke speaking again. The, the intent there was, was not to be sneaky. Um, the intent was just to save some design dollars on our side and change the dimension, so it mo- it was in compliance with the ordinance.
All right.
And, and Mr. Mayor, the only reason why I brought up the five foot is it was one of the recommendations, uh, on page one twenty-four that, from, from staff, they indicated that you could do just the fifteen-foot setback, or you could do a fifteen-foot setback and a five-foot height limitation, and so that's the only reason why I was asking about it.
Oh, okay. Yeah. This, uh, this, uh, this building that y'all are going to be using for your model home has a, a history. Uh, when you're considering the location of your sign, I would, I would, uh, ask y'all to take into consideration the garage has been taken out twice. And you notice the rocks along the right-hand side of the building, and I don't know how many times the mailbox has been taken out.
A bunch.
Yeah, we've, we've got a bet going on how long that mailbox is, is going to last. Um, I was actually confused by all the rocks when we first bought the house, but we've had some friendly neighbors tell us the history, and, and now they seem properly placed and a good, a good idea to keep them on site. Um, so, thank you.
And the city went in and put in a new, uh, storm, storm water drainage there along the front. Uh, so hopefully, that'll help keep people out of the front yard, but just, just be aware whenever you put in your sign location that it's, it could get taken out.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, so I'll ask the audience, Mr. Durbin, I saw your hand up first.
Uh, no, my, my question got answered, um, through one of the other deals. Carry on.
Thank you.
Dorsey.
Yes, hi. My question would be for whoever's going to Luke or Dirk. Um, so you, they just told you about how dangerous that curve is for just your sign, but also, i- if you have cars coming in and out of there to pull in, if you put that sign closer to, oh, I'm trying to think, that road that's there, you're going to blind the whoever's coming out of that driveway onto Boggy backing up, so you're going to have a real bad accident. So you're gonna have a real bad accident there backing onto Boggy. Okay? So I would suggest to you, from a standpoint of design as well, if you moved your sign over to, towards that two zero 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 property and left it on the other side of the big grouping of trees where you would still see it coming down Boggy in both ways and have it a, a double sided sign, you would prevent someone in the driveway getting taken out because they can't see past your sign on Boggy. And you would prevent someone hitting your sign because they're gonna run over those rocks because they're staring at your sign. There's a thing called, uh, target fixation. And when someone's staring at something, they have a tendency of actually hitting it. So if you just moved your sign down into that other corner where those big group of trees are before that other property, you would solve a lot of that. And then my second question was, because you're gonna be home builders here for a long time, it looks like. You're using a wood and vinyl sign. Isn't that a kind of a cheap way of going about that you're gonna be at this building and you're a home builder? And, and I mean, to me, vinyl sign says temporary. And we actually do have an ordinance against no banners. So I don't know if that falls in the no banner because a vinyl sign is a banner and it's just bolted to a wood sign. So I want everybody to be aware of that. And those are my only questions. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I think, uh, to answer your second question first, this is a temporary sign. We plan to have a future model home in a more permanent location within the site. So I, we will be constructing the sign up to a quality that will allow it to withstand the timeline of, of the sales office, which we're projecting is around 12 to 18 months. The vinyl material is also helpful because it allows us to change the information on the sign, such as website or contact information if, if we need to change the information on the side, sign for our, our buyers or prospects when they're coming to visit us. Um, but we, we aren't trying to represent the cheap image. We will be, uh, developing the sign in, in a quality way with quality craftsmanship. Um, and, and thanks for your recommendation on the location of the sign. I think first and foremost, the, the safety of our customers and our potential process, prospects is our priority. So we want people to go in and out of our sales office with ease and without being restricted to their, their viewing capability. So we're definitely gonna take that into account on where we locate the sign.
Thank you. Hey, anybody from the audience? Anybody else? All right, if that's everybody, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion, uh, that we, uh, accept the application for a variance to allow the sign, uh, at nineteen nine ten Boggy Ford Road.
Second. All right, I have the motion and second by Mr. Dabala. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
So I just was curious, are, are either one of the motion or second or interested in, in the 15 foot setback or the six foot height limitation?
No. My personal opinion is that these builders are looking to be good neighbors. I think they will do what is appropriate. The 15 foot setback sounds reasonable to me. If it is a case where it is, uh, an, an obvious problem, simply come back to the council, we'll look at changing it. But, uh, what I'm hearing from Dirk is that these people are interested in doing something that is going to make them a good neighbor in the neighborhood. And I think they will be appropriate with where they put their sign.
And, and the only reason why I, I brought it up is it seems like they were amenable to 15 foot from the pavement and six foot height limitation. So it didn't seem to put any, uh, harm on, on what they're trying to accomplish. That's the only reason why I asked about it.
Mr. Prince?
Just to clarification, the, the 15 foot that the planning and zoning recommended was from the setback, not from the pavement. So it's even further, uh, from the pavement. Uh, and, and the reason I asked the question earlier is I wanted to make sure that that was not an undue hardship. So, uh, I might propose, and Mr. Gossel, it looks like he has a comment. So let me pose this and then we'll hear what he has to say. But I might propose some language like a target setback of 15 feet, but no less than 10 feet from the edge of the property. Uh, and, uh, and, and so if that's, you know, an amenable variance on Mr. Weatherly's motion, then we can consider that.
Yes, Mr. Gaz.
That sounds reasonable.
Mr. Gaz, yes.
I mean, we'd, you know, since we don't wanna come back, I think we're looking to, one thing that's different about us and a sign is, is most of the signs you see are trying to track people that don't know you're there. Ninety-five percent of the people that come to see us are coming to see us. And so they're just looking for validation that this is not a house. And so we don't have to have a lot on our sign, but we do need visibility. And so as, as Luke said, if we could, if we could push it to the west a little bit and push a little closer, I think it would actually help, uh, the driver to keep it from slowing down to go, am I at the right place? This looks like a house. So if you would consider it, we'd love to see it. Thank you.
I, I also wanna add one thing, uh, if, if we are going, if you are going to put a, uh, condition on the sign, perhaps we can put a condition on the distance from the pavement instead of the setback line or the right away line. Um, it's a lot easier to determine. At least in my mind, it's a lot easier to determine since we haven't measured 15 feet from the exact setback point at this point in time.
And, and that's the reason why I said pavement, because I knew that's what you had said, that you seemed to be amenable to that.
All right. So we've had some discussion on that. Um, so, yes.
I would like to change my motion to a 15 feet from the pavement location.
All right. Is my second good with that?
I would, uh, ask, is the, uh, 15 foot, uh, distance the setback or from the, the road itself?
From the pavement.
From pavement. I'll second that.
And can we, can we include the words no less than?
No less than 15 feet from the pavement?
Yes.
I would be acceptable with that.
Please.
Don't I?
All right. So we have the motion and the second for the location being no less than 15 feet from the pavement. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very none. Variance is granted, unanimous. Thank you.
Cheers.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good thing about Zoom.
Were you?
Uh, sorry.
I still think we need to have the meetings at Paul Roberts' house.
Number 11.
We got number 10.
We did number 10.
Number nine.
Oh, did I skip nine already? Oh, yeah. Sorry, nine. All right. So number nine, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number two zero dash eighteen fifty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Vista, Texas, indicating the following platte owned by the City of Laguna Vista for trail development and sustainment for perpetuity as required by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department approving the terms and conditions of the agreement, authorizing its execution by the city manager and mayor, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing a severability clause and providing for an effective date. So this has been on our agenda for quite some time now. Uh, the Turnback Canyon Trail Conservancy is, uh, moving forward with their grant proposal, uh, grant application for Texas Parks and Wildlife. One of the things that the, the department requires is that the city, uh, dedicate the use of this land, or that, for the, um, for the conservancy to use as their trails. And we have to, um, do so via a resolution, um, for their application. Uh, in the past, uh, we were having some mapping issues. We were just really un, unclear exactly where the rail was going. Um, there seemed to be some conflicts with some of the residential lots there to the east. So this has been a, a work in progress now for, I don't know, about two months, I would say. We have finally got the, um, map that shows the actual location of the proposed trail. And at this time, I believe there are no more conflicts with either residential property or with, um, our affluent sprinkler heads and affluent property. Yeah. Is that correct, Roy?
Uh, this, this one's not me, I don't think.
Yeah, Mayor, you've got that, you've got it right. You know, the, looking at the map that, uh, Carl and Chris Martinez has worked on, the pro- the main priority for the Cedar Brakes property is to focus on the proper disposal of effluent. Obviously, until we get to a type one effluent, uh, this is a very important area for us to focus on. And so the secondary use is parks and recreation. And we're a firm believer that in the master plan for, uh, Sunset Park, that, uh, the trail system is a critical element for the success of the park and to the connectivity. And as we've talked for three years now, the connectivity of the entire city, uh, with the trail system.
So now the, the map on page one forty-four with the red line, that is, that is the ac- accurate depiction of where the proposed trail is gonna be now?
Yes, sir. That's, that's very close to what the actual be. The only differentiation will be is when the terrain gets in, there, there could be a little ebb and flow, but yes, that's the, as close as we believe we can get to how it's gonna work.
Okay. Good. Questions, comments from council? Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
So, um, I chatted with Mr. Deekman and Mr. Ray just the other day about this. Um, and Mr. Deekman and I actually walked this three years ago, uh, over there out the end of Foothills Cove. Um, I believe his name in the street. There are, there's a supposed extension of the road that actually does not exist, but there are plotted, um, uh, there are plotted, uh, what do you call it? Pieces laying there, some of which the city owns. And I asked Mr. Deekman if they needed any of those as part of what they were, uh, looking for so that they could, uh, execute on this plan. And he did indicate that there was one, um, and that we probably needed to amend the, um, ordinance to include that one. I then spoke with Mr. Ray, and then I think the two of them spoke to each other. Um, Mr. Ray, did you guys a- a- agree that we needed one of those? And, and does the ordinance need to be amended to include that lot?
Mayor, if you recall, or if you don't recall, I'll just say it, three years ago, this is the, when we looked at these lots that Mr. Sullivan's talking about, uh, we definitely thought this would be a great trailhead property. And I, I think just oversight on my part to not add it this time around, because our intention for at least three years from, from Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Deekman and Sheldon and everybody else that's walked the area is that since the city owned those lots, it would be a value add to put that there. I think Mr. Sullivan and I actually looked at two or three lots at one time thinking, do we need a larger trailhead based on the amount of parking that could happen? Uh, so I think, I, I would say, yes, it would be good to add it to this if council sees this as appropriate as the overall. And this way we would go ahead and earmark that space. Uh, and then if we needed to do any kind of expansion in the future, we have that flexibility.
And Mayor, um, Mr. Deekman did give me the legal definition of the lot in question. It was lot one zero zero one six Barquet Ranches Plat 10 is the one that he had identified. And so if, if, if we do move forward with this and want to add that, um, someone can call that out in their motion.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to look on the map and I couldn't, couldn't see anything. I mean, I can see where it's at, but no, yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Counsel, Mr. Weatherly?
Now, uh, do we want to try to add that to this tonight? Or do we want to bring that back as possibly the three lots as a separate resolution?
Mayor, my, my quick answer is it would be nice to add that lot at this time because I believe the focal point is that's the space we would need and that would be sufficient for now. The, the only difference in the future would be, once everything gets going, if we needed a build out, then we just need to be mindful of in the future. Our goal at this point, as, as the mayor already pointed out, was to, uh, it's been discussed, we've looked at it, we've got the plan, uh, laid out would be to include it now, um, counselor to, so that we could, if council so sees, get this laid out to hand over to the, uh, Turnback Canyon and give them, get them to work.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel? All right.
I have, Mayor, I have a question. Was the address, did I get this, uh, address correctly? One zero zero one six Barquet Ranch Road for the lot that would be added?
Mayor, if I could? Uh, I'm sorry, that's not correct, uh, Mr. Dabala. Um, it, this is a legal description and, and it's lot, lot, L O T, one zero zero one six Barquet Ranches Plat 10.
I'm sorry, you got the, you got it.
I'm not sure who that is.
That's Arch, but what was the plat- what was the plat number?
Uh, plat 10. And, and I'll be happy to make the motion, um, and, and add that information if you would like. Once it's time.
Anybody else on council? Have any questions, comments? All right, Mr. Deekman, do you, would you like to address the council with anything?
Uh, just a few short comments. I appreciate you guys, uh, hearing us tonight. Um, so how this kind of works with this path forward, we've actually been awarded the 2019 and 2020, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant. Um, these are great grants for funding. We've earned about 60,000 with the 2019 grant, about 80,000 with the 2020 grant. And just so you guys know, we plan on going after more, even more money. That's a great way to get federal, uh, funds into our small town. Um, so in terms of being awarded the grant, we've been awarded, but we actually need the city resolution and a few other things to actually get the no kidding funds in hand to start building trails. Uh, this is a key resolution for us tonight. After this, we're gonna move forward with an archaeological study. Our nonprofit actually has that money to fund that not archaeological study. We're expecting that to go well. And once that's done, then we can actually start with trail construction. Uh, there are some hangups. There's, we have to work around Golden Cheek Wardler, uh, their seasons for doing their thing. So if we don't need a February cutoff, then we might be delayed for a couple of months. Um, the bottom line is we are marching forward and we're gonna keep after this. We've been doing this for years and we're gonna get trails on the ground. We appreciate the city council's patience and, uh, we appreciate you guys working with us tonight to this, uh, keeping this moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, anybody from the audience? Any comments? All right. I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution number twenty dash eighteen fifty-nine with the amendment that we also include, a lot that has a full description of lot one zero zero one six. with the amendment that we also include a lot that has a full description of lot 10016 Barque Ranches Platt 10.
Arch, can you mute your thing? It's, we're getting feedback from you. Thank you. All right, I have the motion and the second. I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see, catch who the second was from. Mr. Weatherly? All right. So I've got the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. And the resolution has passed. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Deekman.
Thank you, guys. I'll stand.
All right, now we go to number 11. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding nominees for Travis County Central Appraisal District. Included all the information for the three candidates in the packet. I really don't know any of them personally. I know I've heard of Mr. Buckle because he's been around the area for a little while and he's currently the TCAD representative for our area. So I'll open it up to council. Do y'all have any questions, comments, clarification, recommendations? At all? Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Unless anybody knows different, it seems nice to have someone from Jonestown close to us. Mr. Buckle?
I agree.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it impacts my feeling on who we select, but I, I think a couple of weeks ago when we talked about this, I, I was pondering what actually the job description was for this. You know, we have the, kind of the resumes. I'm still trying to figure out what this person does. You know, whatever it is they're doing, having someone that knows the neighborhood is probably the right choice. I just, I'm not sure, you know, what, why we care or how, how much we should care about the person.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, it's kind of, it's kind of weird. It's like you, you, you get your tax bill every year and your evaluations, people are always going down and, and, and petitioning to have them lowered and so it's, you know, it's a big thing in your life, but yeah, what, what the actual board of directors, what their job here is, it's, it's, it's really unclear. They did not include any description of the job, so I was actually trying to pull it up real quick to see if they had something on their website that describes.
Well, I mean, as I suggested, I'm not sure it's going to change our vote between selecting these guys and Mr. Sullivan's point is strong of somebody locally that understands us. So maybe then drag it, rather than drag us into that discussion, I'll, I'll say that's, that's probably good homework for me for my own education.
Yeah, I mean, it, it talks about careers and, and protests and but there's nothing board, there's board meetings, talks about the meetings. But yeah, it, it does not, it doesn't give a description of what the board actually does, so.
Mayor, on one side, the direct answer is, it says the board hires the chief appraiser, approves the annual budget, approves the contracts, sets general policies, and appoints the secretary and the chairman.
Okay.
I think the chief appraiser, Mayor, I think that's the, one of the primary functions. And then that's how they go through their annual budget process, similar to, to our process. But that's the, if that, that one sentence encompasses every function I believe that they handle.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience? Yes, Dorsey.
Good evening, Mayor. So this, these people that we're hiring, so, um, John, you know, he actually, actually works for the ISD as well. And I actually like Randy, he actually has an MBA in real estate finances and he comes right out of Cedar Park, so that's not too far. And I, I have a problem with anyone who's going to evaluate or appraise our property that works for the ISD, because they would want to swing that to the high side to get more money for the ISD. That's how I personally feel about that. And then also, you know, I believe because, you know, we threw out the way that we appraised property this last year because they were just using the MLS listings, which they had deemed inappropriate. I believe this person might be one of the people who start coming out here to appraise our property. So we should be very weary of who we want doing this. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add?
Sure.
The board does not appraise property or review property values, and the board does not appoint members of the appraisal review board. So they do not have that direct regulation.
Okay, then excuse me, then what do they do? What, what are they doing?
Mayor, if you won't, I'll read the sentence again. The board hires the chief appraiser, approves the TCAD budget, approves contracts, sets general policies, and appoints the chairman and secretary of the appraisal review board.
Sounds to me like they're not going to have a whole lot of direct influence on the actual appraisal process, so.
Correct. That's what it sounds like.
Just a little more clarification, we are not hiring them, Dorsey. This is an appointment.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but you know, hire appointment, it's, they're going to be working for the state, correct? Or for the Right.
You had a comment?
I was just gonna say, I know Tom Buckle. I've, he's an attorney out of Jonestown. He's, he's been practicing law out here in this area. Gee whiz, since the seventies. He's semi-retired. Spends a lot of time, little bit of time on social media, actually. And he's a good guy. I think he'd be objective. I think he'd be good in the role.
Well, he is the current representative and yeah, he's been in the area for a while. And okay, he was on Jonestown City Council, I believe, for a while. He's had some positions in the city of Jonestown, I believe. He was, may have been the legal representative at one point. So he, yes, he has been in the area. I can't say that I've ever met him, but I do know he's in, been in this area. Anybody else? All right, if that is everything, I will accept a nomination, or actually if we don't have to nominate anybody if we don't want to, but at this time I will accept a nomination. Yes, Ms. Weatherly?
Make a motion that we nominate Mr. Buckle to the Travis County Central Appraisal District.
Board.
I'll second that.
All right. I have the motion and the second for Mr. Buckle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, we will recommend, or we will sit our nomination for Mr. Tom Buckle. Thank you. All right, we'll go to number 12. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding resolution number 20-1860, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, appointing an individual to fill an unexpired vacant term as a member serving on the planning and zoning commission.
Yes, sir.
All right, so as you know, Mr. Prince has resigned his position. And so now we have a vacant seat. And that is Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
I'll let you take the lead on this.
Okay. I reviewed the applications of all the applications that were out there. I got them from Sandra. I sat down with Roy and looked at them and my recommendation, and there was five that filled out to be in the first position, that planning and zoning was their number one desire to be on. So I basically limited it down to that, since that was their first position, those are the ones that I really looked at. My recommendation is a person that has been on council before and has a lot of experience with planning and zoning, and that would be Mr. Frank Robbins. I talked with Erin and she felt that that position needed to be filled in order to make sure we had a quorum. And that the, the second position will be filled when, in January, when the other person resign, retires from being on planning and zoning. But that is my recommendation.
All right, and this is a term that expires next year?
No, this goes to 2022. It's just filling in for Paul, for Paul Prince's position. He's taking over Paul's position. Paul was just added to planning and zoning.
And then how many positions do you have coming open?
I have one of the position coming open in January.
Just one? No, you should have, should have three or four.
Well, you know, Tom Monahan still wants to remain on council and Richard Brown still wants to remain on council.
All right.
The one that said he doesn't want to be on planning and zoning anymore.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
I think he would add that, I think Frank would, Frank is very strong in, in subdivisions and traffic studies and stuff like that. So he would add a lot of value, I think, to lose that, that knowledge that he has.
All right. Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming you guys have already gone through this, but I got to ask the question. If we put Frank on there, could Eric file his, Mr. Belay file his complaint to have him removed from P and Z? I mean, I don't want to add him just to get back into that same mess we were in before.
Yeah, I, I asked that question and no one could give me an answer one way or the other. I did ask that question of Erin. And I figured you did. Erin, can you, I'm sorry, Ms. Silvera, can you comment on that? Apologize?
Sure. So, um, the the petition or that he would file that was previously considered was to have him, have someone removed from council. You know, Mr. Belay can bring a complaint against Mr. Robbins at any point for, you know, whatever, you know, based on whatever he believes the infractions were, but it'd have to really be based on something new. The complaint that he brought previously was based on factors that would not exist if he were to be part of the planning and zoning commission. So it's not like, there are kind of two pieces to Mr. Belay's previous complaint. Part of it had to do with statements Mr. Mr. Robbins made that he feels, that he felt was affecting his reputation, Mr. Belay's reputation. He can still bring something if he, if he feels that that's still an issue. The other part was he wanted him removed from city council. He'd have to bring a completely different complaint and he'd have to provide some justification for that complaint based on his participation on P and Z, which would likely not, there would likely not be an opportunity to create the same circumstances as existed previously. Because there's no direct, there's less direct interaction in that way.
Correct. Oh, so I'm sorry, just one last question and I'll leave this be. The charter is what sets out the process that a staff member like Mr. Belay goes through to, to file his complaint and potentially ask for a council member to be removed. Is that same process documented in the charter about commission members? Are, are they treated the same? Or is there not even a process that, that Mr. Belay could go through to, to have Mr. Robbins removed from the P and Z commission?
So P and Z commission members serve at the will of the council. He would have to bring a complaint to y'all and y'all could remove, remove him if the circumstances warranted. So that's a little bit different. There's nobody for him to complain, you know, his complaint was to the council for removal and, and basis for removal. But he'd have to bring a completely different complaint because those bases wouldn't be the same.
Okay. And, and I would just want to be very clear with everybody. I love Frank. He's a great guy. He's a good lion. I work with him. So I'm going to be working with him Saturday morning on trash pickup. I just didn't want us to step into something. And that's the only reason I'm asking those questions.
Yeah, I was concerned about that too, Kev.
Okay.
Anybody else on council? All right, Dorsey. Oh, Mr. Prince?
A couple of things. I'm, I'm wondering, is it appropriate, I don't have a lot of history on these commissions and the appointment process. Is it appropriate, Mr. Williams, for us to ask who, who the other four applicants were? I mean, is that, is that a fair question? I'm, I'm just wondering if we know of the others and if there should be any discussion.
Yeah, you can ask that question because their applications are, you know, are public record. We haven't distributed them as a whole yet because, you know, these are applicants for all the upcoming positions. So he just had, he just went and, and got an early view of them. But yeah, you can ask that.
Okay, if I may extend the question, Mr. Williams, in your mind, had you already selected from the remaining four, who's, who would be the top candidate for the other position that's, that's coming up here pretty soon? If you could maybe address those two pieces, that would be great.
Yeah, I have, I have two, 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 two people in mind for that other position. And then I have a the third person that I have in mind, I have them thinking about for the economic development committee. So I'm trying to utilize all the people that I, I see that I could possibly put them in the right position to make them as strong as possible for helping those different committees.
Thank you.
But are, are you asking me to give you the names right now? I can give you the names right now.
Yeah, if you have one there, sure, that'd be great to share.
One, one was Richard Brown, one was Tom, Tom Monahan, one was Paul Roberts, one was Paul, Paul Smith, and the other one was Deanne, Deanne John Drew, Joe Penn. Those were the five.
All right. Anybody else on council? Questions, comments? All right, Dorsey, yes?
Hi, gentlemen and, and Mayor. I just had a question. I guess anyone can answer this. So does anyone find that, don't get me wrong, because I love Frank too. I think he did a fine job for the city and he was actually voted out and by the public. And so I would like to know, I mean, because Frank is a citizen of Lago Vista, and I think as, as someone, if you wanted to call him up and ask him a question, he would freely give any of the information that he had to you. And don't you think that him and Eric being in such close quarters because they would have to work together with the P and Z, he would have to work with the, you know, the Public Works Department, don't you think that there's going to be some there and it's going to make people uncomfortable? And then also, you know, like Ron Smith still appears for these meetings and, and he's taken his time out. And I'm looking at the room right And I'm looking at the room right now and I don't see Frank Robbins attending this meeting to be appointed to something. And so that's one of my concerns. And then like how Paul Prince asked about the people who were on the applicants. I actually know, I believe that Rob Durbin put in for that place too. And I don't see his name being called out there.
Well, as I said, I looked at the people that had in the number one position. Durbin's on the list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. So I had 20 people that I could look at. Okay. But as I said, P and Z being a commission, I wanted to find someone that they really wanted to be on planning and zoning because it is a very difficult position and there's a lot to learn. And I wanted them to be wanting to actually be on P and Z. You know, some people said, well, that's my number three pick. This one's a number two pick. I'd like this one to be a number five pick. So I got all the people that put some planning and zoning on their choice, but I looked at the number one positions.
And Darcy, just so you know, planning and zoning, the staff liaison for planning and zoning is development services. It is not Public Works, so he would not necessarily be working with Eric. Mr. Ron Smith now lives in College Station. So.
Yeah, yeah, yes, Mayor, I know about Ron moving and he actually probably would attend some of these if we called him anytime. And but then I did ask, because I know Dave, you're, you're the, Mr. Williams, you're the liaison for that committee. And, and so I'm wondering, why isn't Frank at this meeting?
I didn't ask him to be at this meeting. I didn't, you know, Frank will be at enough meetings if he's on P and Z. And Frank has, being a former council member, he's been on numerous meetings. I didn't have a discussion with Frank to say, please be at this meeting.
Okay, but it is on the agenda and that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Marion.
Mayor, a quick question. Do we have a deadline by which to fill this vacancy? Is this the meaning that it must occur?
No, we do not. It's not like, it's not like the council where you have 30 days. But.
So a follow-up question, oh, sorry.
I mean, there are factors, you know, like, let's see. We'd have to take into consideration their December, the 10th meeting, you know. Well, or is there going to be enough members to have a quorum and stuff like that? So it is, it is important that we fill it, but it is not necessary. It is not. Yes.
So a follow-up question. I'm wondering if we are going to be as a council discussing which council members are going to be liaisons for which committees or commissions for the upcoming year? If there's some possibility that the council liaison might change for some or all of the committees, I wonder if it might be an option to allow whoever the new P and Z or maybe it'll remain Mr. Williams, I don't know. Whoever the new liaison is, if there is a new liaison to fill those vacancies.
Yeah, and that's, that's up for council to decide. Here, may I? Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Williams, I wanted to kind of walk through those names again. It sounded like two of the ones you listed are on the commission now and are looking for reappointment. So does that really, there's only about three? You know, that would be Mr. Robbins, Mr. Roberts and Ms. John Joe Penn. Those were the three that, that were left of that group of five?
Yes, yes, from the, from the spreadsheet that Roy supplied me with, those would be the three. Yes.
Okay. And the only comment that I would make is that Mr. Roberts, I mean, you guys were enamored with him enough that you appointed him to council for a session. You felt like he was knowledgeable enough and interested enough. My only question is, 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 did you include him in your consideration about who you want to put forward?
I met with Paul Roberts. I met with Paul Roberts. You know, I really think that I would like to have Paul Roberts on Economic Development to help that committee on Economic Development to be stronger.
Before we get too far off, I don't want to discuss any other board appointments at this time. We're just looking at this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Anybody else, council questions? All right, Mr. Durbin.
Just as a point of fact, I did list paying and zoning as my first choice of the application, of the commissions that I wanted to be on. The fact I'm not on Mr. Williams' list or, or Roy's spreadsheet of lists. I mean, and in fact, I sent each, sent my application to each of you individually. So just so that there would be no mistake about that, but that's fine.
I'm sorry if I missed you, but you know, I was just looking at what, what I received from Roy. I'm sorry.
Well, try read, read your email. I sent it to you directly, but that's fine. You won't. I'm, I'm used to this sort of treatment.
I'm not trying to treat you wrong.
Yes, it does say, I'm looking at it now. Yes. Planning and zoning, number one, Board of Adjustment, number two, and Airport, number three.
Yes, sir. Point of clarification, that list was delivered to Councilmember Williams as of the 15th and that application came in after that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Durbin. Father God.
Point of fact, the application was sent in on the 10th to each and every council member, as well as Mr. Ray. And I think I included Ms. Barton on there as well. But that's fine.
All right, anybody else? Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
I think Frank, Mr. Robbins is a plethora of knowledge and he is an indispensable asset to this city in whatever capacity he decides to serve it in, whether it be on a commission, a board, or as citizen. If I understood Mr. Counselor Williams a moment ago, he may have unintentionally alluded to his intention to not consider me for P and Z at a future time, but instead to the Economic Development Committee, which I appreciate the kind consideration. But if an opportunity exists for me to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission at a future time, ideally still in consideration for appointment in December, I would greatly appreciate that. And at this time, I would just say that in going to P and Z meetings for two years in light of the other candidates that he made reference to, I've been going to those P and Z, Planning and Zoning meetings for two years consistently, such as I have these council meetings. And I have followed these diligently and I understand Chapter 14 and I understand under chapter, understand other chapters of our city ordinances as they pertain, pertain to planning and zoning matters. And I do believe that I could contribute greatly to the commission should the council, Mr. Williams and the other find it appropriate to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? All right, that is all. It is up for action, so I'll entertain a motion.
Again, I make a motion to approve Frank Robbins onto the Planning and Zoning Commission in place of Paul Prince, who I greatly appreciate, who served on P and Z prior to being in city council.
Second. All right. Who was, who was the second? Was that Arch?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I've got the motion and I've got the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Marion?
Mayor, I'm, this is where I'll probably need some guidance, but are we able to offer secondary motions?
You can always amend, yes.
Let me think how to phrase this.
Let me see.
Because what I'm looking to do is, is suggest tabling until new council liaisons have been determined. So I could use some help in figuring out how I would say that.
Okay, so we have a basic motion. You can motion to amend. You can motion to substitute, which replaces the basic motion entirely. Let's see. Let me see.
A motion to table, Mr. Mayor, would defer the motion under discussion to a future date.
Yes, okay, so special motions, yes, motion to table would defer the motion under discussion to a future date.
Then I would make a motion to table.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Let me see, motion to table does require a second, yes. Okay, so I got the second from Mr. Sullivan. All right. So I'm sorry, I'm looking at my chart. So we will, we consider, let's see, chairs.
Do you want to take a vote on your, on the motion to table? If it passes, then the item's tabled. If it does not pass, then you go back to the motion that was previously on the table, which was the motion to appoint Frank.
Okay, that's what I was looking for is what order did I have to take it in? Because sometimes you take the basic motion first. In this case, it's, all right, so we're considering, we're considering the motion to table at this time. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That's one, two, three, four. All those opposed, nay. Okay. I believe that was Dave, Dick, Arch, I couldn't tell.
Nay.
Nay. All right. The motion to table passes four to three. All right, so that one is tabled, thank you. And we will go on to number 13. All right, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding proposing legislation that would impact the city's partnership with Cap Metro Transportation. So yeah, what I'm looking for tonight is y'all's guidance and wonders. You want me to file this or not? Or if it, as is, or if it needs to be amended? I'm hoping everybody took a look at the actual bill that we have filed twice before. The main things about it are the net financial obligation. We're wanting the comptroller to tell us what their net financial obligation is. We're asking that they give us credit on our net financial obligation for rail service, since we do not have a train that comes to our town. We are asking that the comptroller also, if we are still in the system, if we take a vote and we choose to stay in, this bill would also direct the comptroller to provide us annually with a statement of our net financial obligation. This legislation is asking for the wording to be written into the affirmative, as it is supposed to be according to state legislation. It's funny how they pass a law that everything has to be written to the affirmative, but yet unless you go back and rewrite it, it's, it stays in the negative. So we're asking that the language be redone. We're also asking for the timeframe to get rid of the five-year period between votes, should we so choose. I believe Cap Metro is the only metro transportation authority in the state that requires five years. I believe Dallas and, and Dart and whatever's in Houston, I believe all of those are just one year. Austin has a special chapter in the state legislation that gives them five years. What else? What am I forgetting? Am I forgetting anything, Josh?
No, sir, I believe you've hit all the high points on it.
Comptroller, language, year, yeah, I think that's it.
Withdrawal cost.
Yeah. So questions? Yes, Mr. Weatherly.
Do we think there's any better chance of getting this through the legislation than last year? Or two years ago?
You know, it's hard to say, but we have a little more, I guess, working relationship with, with Ms. Goodwin this time around. She is not a rookie or what do you call freshman any longer? And yes, she chose not to go forward last time, but I think she has gotten the, I hope she has caught the drift that we're not real happy. And I'm hoping, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I'm hoping that she will be more amenable to it. We have a new, we have a new senator too. Ms. Eckert, that used to be our county commissioner, is now the senator for our area. Haven't really discussed Cap Metro with her. I, I don't know, but we're not going to get anywhere if we don't, you know. And the one thing about it, this is, this, the five-year period has come since the last time we've, we've voted on this. So we can still vote on this in November without this legislative change. And you know, at this, I'm thinking whether we take the legislation through, push it through or not, if we hold a vote in November of 21 and the citizens vote to stay in a second time, that's two and five years. You know, in my mind, it'll be kind of a dead issue for, for a while. I don't, I don't want to keep hammering, you know, the citizens on a Cap Metro vote. You know, I'm not like the city of Austin and I'm going to keep putting a train on the agenda until you give me $7 billion to go to the airport. So anyway, that's, that's my thought, but I really don't know what her chances are, but you know, we, if we don't try, we definitely know what our chances are. Yes, Mr. Prince?
I'm 100% in favor with everything that's been here and I'm just following up on Mr. Weatherly's comment. I don't know if we might stand a better chance of success if we simplified the request. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, you guys will know better than me, but that would be one question I would have. And then, then secondly, I would, I would suggest it seems to me that reversing this negative language in the vote language is probably the top priority so that the vote we get from our citizens, we believe, is really the will of the citizens, not the confusion of the citizens.
Yes, and I believe the, when Paul Workman pushed it through, we ended up negotiating on the final draft and the and the, all the parts about the comptroller. Cap Metro got that as part of their negotiation. They were willing to give us the one year and stuff, but uh, the stuff with the comptroller, they didn't want to give up control of that net financial obligation. So there is language in there that we can, you know, use to bargain with Cap Metro on the final draft and for them not to completely oppose it during the local and consent hearings. So, yes, Ms. Marion.
Uh, Mayor, a quick question. I um, I think I heard you uh, mention this at the beginning, but just wanted to make sure. So it says in the, the statutory language that by October 1st, right, is when they're supposed to give us every year what our NFO is. Have we gotten that already this year? And if so, what is our NFO right now?
No, that is what we are asking for. We do, right now, Cap Metro does not give you the NFO until after you vote to get out.
Oh, okay.
There is no.
We're asking for it by October 1.
Yes. Right now, we have no idea what our NFO is. All we know is last five years ago, they estimated it to be around a million dollars, but they told us that that would not be calculated unless the citizens voted to get out. Now they're telling us that, and your estimate's about 2 million. So you figure if it's doubling every five years, you know, it, it could get expensive. And now they've got a new train line.
Yeah.
Most of the citizens of Austin are, are paying for the,
Yep.
you know, for the infrastructure, but man, if that train goes in, you know, and it's part of the Cap Metro system, our NFO is going to go may triple in five years, you know? So I, you know, and I can't ever get a good answer of whether small cities will be required to pay for the operation of that train line. Yes, Ms. Marion.
The only other thing I wanted to say is, is like Paul, I, I am absolutely in favor of the, the changes to the language. So I, I think this is great. Thank you.
Right. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh, Mr. Workman came out here when we had the shovel event for the new fire station up on Bronco. And I got a chance to chat with him about this very topic. And what he indicated to me was, is that we didn't get down to one year. He said the most they would agree to is two or three years and that they, we're, we're going to have anything to do with the comptroller. It looked like it was going to be difficult to get what we were looking for. My second thought is, is that if we're going to do a vote, we need to do it this November so before, or you know, a lot of the rail stuff gets thrown in there and we triple and quadruple. So to me, we need to put it on the, on the, if we're going to put it on the ballot, we need to put it on the ballot this coming November. Um, and, and, and my, my next thought is if, if it doesn't, we, we won't be able to change the language by this coming November. So we're gonna have to deal with the negative language. We need to do a serious voter education drive so people know how to vote to get the result they want. But if we don't, if they don't vote to get out after two votes, uh, and then our net financial obligation goes to the roof, my suggestion is, is that we're never getting out of Cap Metro. And so um, I would just recommend you not waste your time trying to get this legislation through, but instead that we focus on voter education. So people know how they're voting and they vote the way they, they want to, they really intend to. And then we just live with, with the will of what the voters say. Because quite frankly, I think you will be, unfortunately, I think you will be wasting your time trying to get the legislation through.
To talk.
That's just my two cents worth. That's probably what it's worth.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I think if there's two opportunities to get out of it, we take both of them. I don't know why you would give up one chance to, to get out of Cap Metro and hope that the second, the second option will work.
I'm sorry. So Arch, what's, what's the first option? The only option we have to get out is to vote.
Well, what, what were you saying about the discussion that you had with Vicki Goodman?
I was just trying to get her to put the legislation, you know, to file it as a bill. So that's.
Get us out of Cap Metro.
Yeah. The, the, the legislation will provide different things, but it, it definitely doesn't get us out. But the only way we can get out is for citizens to vote us out.
Done. Okay.
And, and Kevin has a good point. I mean, it may be, it, it may be a few dollars effort to try and get it pushed through, but you know, that's one of those things we'll never know if we don't try. So.
Mayor, on our end, you know, from our discussions a couple of years ago, and then the discussion that you and I've had this year, the legislation has already been written, as you pointed out, and the ability for us to go have a dialogue with our legislators once again. I mean, that opens up an opportunity where as a city, it's part of our responsibility to keep an open dialogue with our Texas legislators, especially when we're this close to the Capitol. You know, I think that we don't want to be lazy in our efforts. And if we're going to be making trips and having conversations, anyway, it, it just values us to say, oh, by the way, we also have this one thing that we're asking you to consider that we asked you to consider two years ago and you chose not to, to do so.
Right. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, let me rephrase what I said. I have absolutely no problem with us chasing this and trying to get the changes. I would only request that we don't allow that effort to take away from the voter education effort. Cause I think that's the really important thing. So as long as we put all the effort in the world into voter education, by all means, please do. Go, go talk with Ms. Goodwin and see what you can do.
Good. Yeah. Yeah. And it's, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as a point of statistics, um, bill filing has already begun, as you're probably aware. As of today, 627 bills have already been filed in the House. Um, and so, you know, at least on that side of the Capitol, there's a lot of action underway and having been a lobbyist in a prior, prior job, um, you know, getting in earlier is, it can be critical to the potential life. Um, I've seen that um, Ms. Goodwin's filed some bills already. And so it's, you know, I guess if she had hesitance on filing any bills previously, I don't know that she'd be necessarily, you know, we could win her over on this one, but she doesn't seem shy at this point. Um, as far as that's going, so.
Well, and the good thing, this is a local in consent bill as well. It's not going to the full house. So I know we had, we had heard along those lines, you know, yeah, you want to get it in early. But then we also heard that local in consent was not as critical because
Right.
Not, not everybody hears it, you know, it just goes to that committee and
Yeah.
And usually once, if it passes out of committee, then it, it normally just gets rubber stamped. So. But yeah.
Getting it out of committee is a critical part though.
If council set agrees that we want to file it again, then yes, I will be contacting her office tomorrow. Ms. Goodwin, we need to talk. Anybody else?
Certainly, I'm in the heart to try.
Yeah. All right. Darcy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I understand that this is just a wording and for you guys to be actually to go uh, up and talk to them about this, about getting out of Cap Metro. And I remember we had a conversation about, um, you know, if you get out of Cap Metro, what are you planning on planning for the people who actually do take this, the system down? And then because I've heard about the city doing it and as, as, as Councilmember Sullivan was saying, you know, you're going to have to have the packet ready to tell the voters, blah, blah, blah. But you're also going to have to have something together to tell the voters that you're going to offer them something else. What is your, what is your plan? Are you planning on, on a little shuttle that's going to take you to Lakeline? Because they did pass the initiative to the bond to build to the airport. So there will be a rail line straight to the airport from now on. And I don't know when it's going to happen, but if you completely back out of this and give the people up here no way of getting to the airport except by vehicle, that's really a, going to be a crying shame because you could get potential visitors that come with no vehicle out here for short-term rentals. And it's a big vacation type of deal that know how to travel by train. And we are cutting off our nose because we all drive. And so I just want to make that clear that you are, I understand you want to change the wording so you can get out of it and get the, the amount that you owe before you get out of it. So you know, but you also need to have the plan in place for the voters and let them know what you plan on doing when you pull out. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. That will all be part of the package. Right. Anybody else? All right. If that is it, I will entertain a motion. Yes, Ms. Weatherly.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that the council authorizes you and Mr. Ray to approach our legislators with uh, this piece of legislation. Try to get the wording changed.
Second.
All right. I have the motion and the second from Ms. Marion. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, we will go forward with the legislation. Thank you. And we are now on number 14. Okay. We are in consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And I'm going to go ahead and pull number 14 out of the consent agenda because I've already had multiple requests for discussion on it. So we will consider first of all, number 14, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number 20-1858, a resolution by the city council, the city of Lagavista, Texas, confirming the appointment of Jared L. Smith as Associate Municipal Judge for the city of Lagavista, Texas. On the, the summary here, it says the city may be considering, is considering the opportunity can convert our municipal court to a court of record. Chapter 30 of state statute, section 30 dot 00003 states, the governing body made by ordinance created municipal court of record. If the governing body determines that the creation of the court is necessary to provide a more efficient disposition of the cases arising in the municipality. In doing so, section 30 dot 00006 states, a municipal judge must be a licensed attorney in good standing and have two or more years of experience in the practice of law in this state. Currently Judge Stephen S. Spindler, who was appointed in August of 2017 to serve a two-year term as Associate Municipal Judge for the city of Lagavista. Although Judge Spindler was, has been a great public servant for our city, he is not a licensed attorney in the state of Texas and therefore will not be allowed to serve as an associate judge if the court is changed to a court of record. City Charter, section 4 dot 03 states, the municipal judge and associate judge shall be set by the city manager and approved by the council. Our current judge, Jay Caballero contacted Jared Smith to verify interest in working with their municipal court. Mr. Smith is interested in serving our community. Mr. Smith is graduate. Anyway, uh, it's a little more background on this. Mr. Spindler, uh, because of the COVID concerns, has not served in, in his capacity as the associate judge since the onset of COVID. And I believe he has stated that even after it, things change, uh, he's not going to continue to work as an associate judge. Josh, do you have anything to add to uh, this summary?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor. So when we, uh, when Judge Caballero started with the city, we did have two associate judges. We had um, Judge Spindler and we had Judge Kevin Madison and Judge Madison resigned his position with the city and that left us one. And you know, for the municipal court and the amount of traffic that we get, we typically think that having two would be fantastic, but you want to have someone as a backup. We believe it helps with the efficiency. Our city attorney did reach out to Robbie Chapman and Mark Goodner at TMCEC. That is the Texas Municipal Courts Education Center to ask them if they had recommendations for potential judges that would want to serve or to see if, if they wanted to serve in that capacity. Unfortunately, they didn't have anyone to recommend that wasn't already occupied in another court or that wanted to, to come out to this area. So this is the individual that we were able to locate and comes through our presiding judge. And so we feel confident that this individual will be a good asset to our court system.
And I, I just want to clarify. I know the summary talks about the court of record. Uh, that is not something we are considering at this time. We're just considering the appointment of an associate judge. The, the discussion about whether we want to change to a court of record will come to council at a later time. So questions from council? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
I pushed the wrong button. Um, okay. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I know we're going to talk about the court of record at another time. My only question about it is, is there something in the characteristics of a court of record that would help reflect on who the right person is to be an associate judge? Can you help us just understand that a little bit? And I don't know who the right person is to respond to that, Ms. Silvera, Mr. Ray, whoever, but uh, it certainly would be helpful to me to understand that better. So then I know better who's a good candidate.
Mayor, my initial comment is the, uh, the traits of being a municipal court judge are going to be the same for us in our municipal court of operation. The only other candidate, the only other qualification is, as it was stated in the staff summary of being a requirement by the state of Texas. So if you're looking for the trait, that would be something different. I would say go back to the legislation that says they would have to be a a licensed attorney in the state of Texas with experience. However, I would say that the experience as an attorney is definitely a good asset and that, that in itself would serve, whether it's a quarter record or a non-quarter record.
Aaron, can you clarify on on the court of record, why, why is it a requirement to, to hate that they have to be an attorney and have the experience? What's different about the court of record?
So the, the big difference between being a court of record and not a court of record has to do with the appeals process. Uh, if you're not a court of record, as we are not today, any cases that are appealed from a municipal court go to Travis County and are reviewed de novo, meaning they get to start over. Um, they're reviewed anew. If you are a court of record, uh, there are some additional recording requirements because you have to create the record such that if a case is appealed, it goes as a true appeal, meaning the appellant has to file a bond for the costs. They, um, they appeal the decision based on the record. Uh, and so they would have to demonstrate there was an error that occurred in the case. They don't get to just start over anew. One of the big reasons. One of the big reasons why I think this is important for Lago Vista is that it it would, and we'll get into this when we actually go through the process of discussing this in 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 more detail, but to kind of keep us focused on the discussion related to the judge, they, the minimum requirement is two years of experience as a practicing attorney. And I think part of the rationale for that is you have to understand how to create the record. You have to understand the rules of evidence in a different way or more intensely because there's more what the, what the appeals court is going to look at is was there error? Is there error in the record? And so if you're a licensed attorney, there's less opportunity for there to be error, I think. And so you have a little more structure and function because they have that training and experience, that knowledge.
Thank you. Does that help, Kevin?
Yes, it did. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Council? Yes, Ms. Marion.
I actually have many questions, but I think the the two big buckets of questions that I have on this topic are about the application process and what documents we are able to have access to, like, are we able to have access to the official job posting and scoring grids from interviews held with folks who had an opportunity to apply for the position and things like that before, you know, a decision is is made, just so that we can take a look at other folks that may have had the opportunity to apply and what their qualifications may have been. And then the other big bucket has to do with Mr. Smith and his experience. Five years as a practicing attorney is the extent of his experience. And I was just wondering if he has any experience as a sitting judge, because being a judge and being an attorney are very different. And if so, what's the extent of of his experience as a sitting judge and what kind of training has he had?
Mayor, if you want me to answer the first part of that.
Okay.
The process we went through for the presiding judge, we advertised, we took the applications, we selected a candidate, made a selection, presented at the council. For associate judge, we, and I think I mentioned this before, we did not advertise for an associate judge position as this city hasn't advertised for an associate judge position. So we didn't go through a selection. I think I pointed this out. We have looked for people that would have some interest. And one of the people that we had as an associate resigned from the position. So we have a struggle with locating individuals that are going to be qualified for that position.
Yeah, and
Would it be harder to locate them if we don't post the position?
Mayor, well, you can advertise for any point. This is an appointment. This is not the hiring of that that staff position. So if council says to not do it, Mayor, and you want us to advertise out, it's not as hard because we go through legal channels, we contact courts, we talk to the TMCEC, which is the point. So looking at the operations.
What was, what was? What was the other part of your question, Ms. Marion? I'm sorry. That was that was kind of the first one, the first block of questions. What was the second one?
About Mr. Smith's experience as a sitting judge and what sort of education and training he's had specific to being a judge.
And I do not know that. Do we know if he has any experience as a judge?
Mayor, we have full work history and everything from Mr. Smith is on non-judge experience, so we have full work history and and a resume there that shows activities.
So, Mr. Mayor, I looked at his firm's website today. I'm not, I'm not personally familiar with Mr. Smith. This recommendation came from our sitting judge or presiding judge. But I looked at his information on his firm's website. He is a practicing trial attorney. He represents clients, his firm represents clients in many municipalities. So he's going to be extremely familiar with municipal law as that goes from the defense attorney side of it. And as you guys probably know, I don't believe Judge Jay, Judge Caballero is, was a judge previously. He's done exceedingly well. The court runs very efficiently under his guise. He really needs someone to be the backup to magistrate folks. If if he were unavailable, my understanding is that this person lives in Austin and so has that availability. The other persons who were recommended to me, who, one of which who is an associate judge in for the city, for Westlake, lives in San Antonio. And so, you know, that's, although it's, you know, the the court is moving to more online processes. We have not had court for regular dockets. Virtually, it's all been in person under very controlled circumstances. The, we are not allowed to hold jury trials until, at least right now, the the limitation is is February. I expect that to get pushed out until we have a COVID vaccine in place. And so, you know, we reached out, the court administrator, Robin, reached out to folks to try to find persons who would have the qualifications, be a good fit for the city of Lago Vista, work well with the current judge because those two people would be, would work, you know, coordinate a lot together. And so this was the person that the judge knows and and feels would be a good fit for Lago Vista.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Council? Yes, Mr. Prince.
Well, just just one point of clarification and then I do have some questions. So there was some confusion in my mind, I think some others, as to what the process is supposed to be because our our city charter says that the city manager appoints the municipal judges, whereas our ordinances said it's city council appoints judges. And so I had asked Ms. Silvera that and I'll just ask her to confirm that the charter takes precedence in this case.
Yes, that that's correct, Councilmember Prince. The the city charter would take precedence over the ordinances and so we'll be bringing an ordinance amendment back to the council to fix that inconsistency. So the process that's laid out in the in the charter that's voted on by the citizens is the is the controlling provision.
Okay, thank you. And then my my first question is, I'm frankly a little confused as to the driving motivation here because the the executive summary talks quite a bit about the sort of the forward look towards court of record, but a lot of the discussion is about, it seems more like workload and ability to, you know, cover the the caseload. And in fact, the statement was made that Mr. Spindler has declined to to go to the court. I don't know, you know, if we were doing virtual. So I would, I do want to clarify between that. Is the the primary motivator getting ready for court of record, which we haven't decided on yet? Or is the primary vote motivator really around workload? And if that's the case, has Mr. Spindler also declined to do virtual meetings? Is that, is that also not an option with our existing existing judge?
Mayor, the primary motivation in this is to have a an associate judge or Judge Caballero.
All right.
And could that be virtual was the second part of my question?
The, we have not had a process, the judge has not put a process in place that would allow for us to do virtual hearings. There are, and and furthermore, the Supreme Court has hasn't allowed for virtual jury trials. I believe, you know, there have been some virtual appearances that have occurred in other cities and other courts. But Judge Caballero has not instituted that process for our court.
And if I may have fallen question, I think this is my last question. Is it consideration locality, availability, perhaps, you know, for ease of access for signing warrants, that kind of thing? Are we, you know, both with our existing judge and this one under consideration? There is a, I think, if I understand right, a bit of a drive to their location.
Mayor, what we've noticed now, and I think city attorney pointed this out, the processes and efficiency and effectiveness of our court system is running at a a three-year high and the workflow is extremely efficient. I believe Mr. Prince has talked to our police chief to get his comments and recommendations. And I I believe the chief has issued any kind of concern and actually has stated that the court systems are going effectively. You're hearing from our city attorney. That's a pretty easy recommendation for me, a city manager, to say that if I've got our city attorney and prosecutor, I have our judge, have our police chief, have our development services processes. I think that's a really good support for a recommendation. And I I'm not sure who else we would ask for that recommendation.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Ms. Marion.
Yes, I wanted to just ask two clarifying questions. The first one, I I think I heard, I don't remember who it was, earlier mentioned that since COVID hit, Associate Judge Spindler has not performed any duties related to being the associate judge. And I just wanted to make sure that that's accurate, or is he just not performing duties in person? Is he still signing warrants and doing those sorts of things when they're needed?
Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure if Judge Spindler has completed any acts during this time at all. I, like I said, I have had a phone call and a couple emails with him.
Yeah, as far, as far as I know, he has not performed any, any duties at all. But I can't, he may have done something for PD, but I I can't say.
He's, I understand he's said he's performed nothing during this, during the COVID time because they're still doing magistration in person and and he doesn't want to be in proximity.
Okay, thank you. And then the other point of clarification is on courts and whether they're holding us in person or virtual courts. And maybe someone who has a bit more knowledge than me can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the Supreme Court had an emergency order in place that stated that courts must continue to use all reasonable efforts to conduct their proceedings remotely and that they weren't expecting that to change anytime soon. Can someone maybe clarify for me?
Right, but there's a limitation on jury trials, not allowed to have jury trials because you can't have that many people in the room at the same time. We'd be, we would be in violation of our order. The the judge was required to put together a process for how we were going to handle those courts court dates. And and the judge, it's, it's, he's the one who's in charge of how the court is run and he has not opted to do virtual hearings. I'll tell you from the prosecutor's perspective, many of the folks who most of the people who have cases in front of our municipal court are pro se, meaning they do not have an attorney. And many of those folks also do not have the kind of technical capabilities to perform virtual hearings, to to sign in to do these virtual hearings. It it's a good portion of the population that may not have the financial means to have the computers and software and so on to to do it that way. So it, in theory, it could be done, but in all practicality, it it would have to be done as a, you know, we'd have to have multiple dockets, some virtual and some not. Now, I'll tell you, the judge has said that if for those folks who, if they are over, I think, if if you're in the critical age category for COVID, we've moved those dockets out. He has allowed for the option to do virtual hearings for those folks if they need it. But we haven't had the request to do virtual hearings either. They've been very, the dockets have been very controlled. The dockets have been relatively small because the number of traffic citations that have been issued of late has been a little lower because, one, people aren't traveling as much. And two, our officers are taking precautions to ensure their own protection during the COVID this this time period. So we haven't had as many citations as we might in a, under normal circumstances. And so, but I do expect that to ramp up here in hopefully 2021 with the the implementation of a vaccine. So we want to be prepared to have that. The other limitation that the courts have faced is that Travis County is not taking folks like warrant, that that have warrants, you have, it has to be a certain kind of warrant before that Travis County will take those persons into custody. And so, you know, it has to, has to be a pretty serious violent crime. I didn't, I don't have the specifics listed, but those who may have warrants for, say, failure to appear at municipal court for a basic traffic ticket, they're not going to take those folks. So the circumstances are just really different right now.
Anybody else? All right. Did you have something else, Ms. Marion?
I I do, but I'm hogging up the airwaves with this. So I was going to ask, once the folks in the community have had an opportunity to ask questions, we can still ask more questions later if if I still have lingering questions. I just don't want to log up the whole meeting.
Yes, you, I will allow that. Yes. All right. Well, then I will go to our citizens. I have two that have signed up to speak to this. First, Mr. Robert Durbin. You are recognized.
Okay, well, it's interesting to be as big as I am and I feel a little like Baltimore, the name who will not be spoken. But I wasn't sure I was going to be allowed to speak tonight because this was on the consent agenda. So I prepared a statement to deliver at the beginning. I will just read that and we'll go from there. I wanted to speak tonight to ask this council if they intended to continue allowing Mr. Ray to dismantle the co-equal third branch government in the city, the municipal court. Municipal court interacts with more people in Lago Vista than any other city department, save the folks collecting the utility bills. One year ago, the city of Lago Vista had a court that was the envy of any small Texas city. In its three judges, there was approximately 115 years of legal experience and over 60 years of judicial experience. All three judges lived in Lago Vista. All three judges performed their duty out of a spirited community service as they were not paid. And all three judges had a passion for the law and justice. One year and two days ago, you eliminated two of those judges, one by decree and one by insult. You appointed as a presiding judge, you met a man who had less than half the legal experience of the other two applicants and zero judicial experience. A man who had quit practicing law, a couple A man who had quit practicing law a couple of years earlier to pursue another discipline and was attending school to do so. That judge lives in Round Rock. The council did not ask a single question in open session, despite knowing of problems in the selection process. They rubber stamped his selection without debate or even a question. The council did not care. Judge Spindler will be leaving the bench at the end of his term. And now you are asked to appoint a man with barely five years' experience as an attorney. All his experience is in one discipline, best we can tell, that being criminal defense attorney. Upon the appointment of this new candidate, the court will have a grand total of about 18 years' legal experience. Neither the presiding judge nor the candidate appear to have ever handled a case on appeal as an attorney. Neither has any legal digital footprint, which indicates no significant cases have ever been handled by either one of them. I do not want to bash these two guys because all they did wrong was file a job application. And I understand Judge Cavalero is genuinely a nice guy and working very hard. All they did was submit applications. The fault lies in city management for selecting the least qualified applicant and then putting together packets which are incomplete or deceptive to justify that selection. And the council for completely abdicating its job of oversight. There's a conflict between the city charter and the enabling ordinance of the municipal court. While the charter says it's the city manager's job to appoint judges, the ordinance states that it's the council's job. Makes no difference, neither one of them does the job properly. This conflict brings us to question as to whether the selection of judges is, is even valid in Lago Vista and puts every penny collected, every person jailed and every bill set in jeopardy. I explained this to the court members a year ago, council didn't care. Now let's hope some of the new council members do. My only hope is that the new members will take more interest in and have more desire to learn more about this important fundamental governmental function and do your best to fill to staff these judicial positions with the best qualified and experienced citizens of Lago Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now I have Mr. Kevin Madison. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
That's Judge Kevin Madison, Mr. Judge Mayor Tippel. All right. Judge Kevin Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I just want to say that I concur with what Judge Durbin has stated. And it was a bizarre situation. I applied for the position. I'd been serving as a years an associate judge. I have 30 years of experience as a judge, 22 years of experience as a judicial instructor with the Texas Municipal Courts Education Center, the only authorized agency to teach judges. And I've been recognized as municipal judge of the year back in 2009. And I'm the past president of the Texas Municipal Courts Education Center. So I know a thing or two about the municipal court education center and being a judge. I run six municipal courts in central Texas. And first of all, I'd like to make a comment about your court operating. This is one of the problems of hiring somebody who has no judicial experience. I was shocked to hear that Lago Vista was operating municipal court when there's expressed Supreme Court orders. So I would ask Ms. Silvery, you need to check with the Office of Court Administration. I've had personal conversations with David Slaton, who is the executive director. I've been on numerous webinars and conferences, webinars, many different instructional situations. And it is crystal clear, there is a Supreme Court order of Texas forbidding municipal courts from operating in-person proceedings, period. Jury trials are banned in district court, county court and municipal courts. But municipal courts are considered non-essential courts, which by law, right now, under Supreme Court emergency orders, should not be operating at all. They are ordered to operate virtually, which apparently your presiding judge did not know and has been operating a court in violation of the law. And if in fact they've been operating in person, that's a violation of the Supreme Court order, crystal clear. Check it with the municipal court education center. I just finished a three-day webinar online, we discussed that. And there's still courts operating improperly. All of my courts are operating virtually. 99% of those people are pro se and they have no problem clicking on their iPhone to hit go to meeting or on Zoom. We've had no problems at all with that. So enough said about that. My issue is, I agree with Judge Durbin, when you've taken a court which has a lot of judges who have judicial experience and hired one, and the, and the gentleman who was hired over me was Mr. Caballero, who apparently according to Mr. Ray scored a 521 and I scored 520 points, which I went to his office and met with them and asked them how that happened. And I asked him, how did he score one point, you know, difference between me, who had 30 years of experience, 22 as an instructor? And his response was, well, he had judicial experience, he was in a courtroom with a judge. So no, it's not like I stated in the holiday and expressed that last night, it doesn't work that way. You're either having experiences judge or you don't. And if you want to run, have, run your city, run a court with judges who have zero experience, then that's the direction the city is going to take, but you're not going to be respected in central Texas or in Texas for doing that. I personally don't think it's a good idea to hire an attorney who's solely a criminal defense attorney. When you go to the website, for example, for this candidate, you see him saying on AVO that his practice consists 100% of criminal defense, that he represents 40% general criminal defense, 40% DWI, so he's a specialist in DWI, 15% of his practice is defending and representing sex offenders and 5% is defending violent offenders. Now, this is what he says on his AVO website. How do you have a judge who's actively practicing criminal defense, magistrating your prisoners, issuing blood search warrants for DWIs when he may be ending up representing one of those DWIs? I think it creates an inherent conflict of interest, or at least the appearance of a conflict of interest. So when I became a judge, I hung up my criminal law practice. Absolutely, you know, I don't think you should be a practicing criminal defense attorney, especially in the same county where you're practicing and sitting as a judge and also by virtue of being a judge, you're a state magistrate. So I think that's something the council needs to look at. The square way, I think you need to look at your court operating when there's a COVID-19 order and your presiding judge is apparently not even aware that it's illegal to be operating your court. You're going to get your city sued. So that is the avenue you decided to take when you hired a judge with exactly zero experience. And I don't think it, as a citizen here, I don't want my judge to have zero experience. I don't care that you don't hire me, I've got six other courts. But for God's sakes, at least hire somebody who's been a judge for five or 10 years, not somebody who has zero experience. I will tell you, from being a judge for 30 years, it takes five years to get your sea legs and know what you're doing in court. Same as being a city manager, same as being a department head. It takes years of experience and you cannot ignore that. So I appreciate your time and that's my comment. But as a citizen of Lago Vista, I would like to see having qualified judges sitting in our courts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that is all that I have that has signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Yes, Darcy.
Hi, um, I just had a question. Would this judge be signing warrants for, let's say, people who need to have their house searched or need to be brought in on some charges to the police station? Because I was just burglarized the other day. And so I'm wondering, is this going to be the guy that I have to deal with? Because the detective told me that our court up here doesn't see cases like this anyway. We only see class C or something like that. And, and, and breaking into a vehicle would be considered a class A offense and that it would always go down to Travis County. But my understanding is if they need a warrant signed to get evidence against someone in that case, they go to the nearest judge, which would be our judge right up here, to sign that warrant to get that person to get arrested before they get rid of everything that could possibly make them guilty. So I am not really wanting a judge who, or a lawyer who has been defending crooks. I, I, I agree with Kevin Madison or Judge Madison. I, I think that's absurd. I don't even know how anyone, I mean, he's a, he, he represents sex offenders? I mean, this is what we want in our city? I, I am appalled right now. I am really appalled. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to say something.
I don't know who that is.
My name's Michelle, hello. Speaking to Darcy's point about, you know, her criticisms on criminal defense, I would like to say that our government is set up in such a way that the accused have the right to have representation and to be defended. So I think that her criticisms should be evaluated or taken with a grain of salt because if we don't have criminal defense attorneys or attorneys that could represent the accused, then the power that the government would have or the power that any agency that could file reports on somebody, that, that's not okay. And I honestly think that contextualizing Mr. Smith and his practice and saying that he only defends crooks and criminals, I'm not sure that anyone could truthfully and fully attest to the fact that any, every single one of his clients or any of his clients have truly committed an act of, you know, a criminal act. I'd also like to say that when you are charged with a criminal charge, the accused has the right to hold the government to their burden and must be proven with a criminal charge beyond a reasonable doubt. So I find that criminal defense, while it may have a lot of stereotypes and generalizations, I can appreciate a criminal defense attorney holding the government to their burden and defending the accused. And I would not otherwise want a system where you can be accused of a crime and not have someone defend you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Durbin. You're muted.
To Michelle's point, which is a very good one. And I think as Judge Madison reflected, at some point, he did practice some criminal defense work. At some point, I did a lot of criminal defense work. We both, neither of us did criminal defense work while we were judges. That's, that was the point Mr. Judge Madison was making. As far as defending, you have to also understand, your point brings up the fact that all the more reason judge, the judges need to be experienced. Because at the time that these warrants are signed for either arrest or search, then that person does not have an attorney yet. And the judge is the one that is reviewing the affidavit to make sure that the officers do have probable cause to issue those warrants. And if the, if they don't, the warrants get denied in, for the very specific reason of protecting that citizen's constitutional rights. So your, your, your argument is well-placed, but it also supports the idea that you need somebody that absolutely knows what they're doing. Because we are having to, in a lot of times, we're arguing with police officers who are standing there who say my affidavit's good and it isn't. So that, that, that demonstrates the, the fact that you need more experienced judges at that particular time of the proceedings to protect the constitutional rights. And, but thank you for your comments, Michelle, those were, those are right on point, actually. I admire criminal defense attorneys, just not while they're on the bench. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So before we get into more discussions back and forth between the citizens, yeah, well, I won't tolerate that. We're here to talk about whether to appoint, to confirm this appointment to associate judge. And we're not going to start a debate between the citizens. So with that being said, is there any more comments on the actual thing that we are considering here?
Yes, I have one more comment. I think that there has been discussion. Yes, this is Michelle again.
You need to wait till I recognize you before you start speaking. So Michelle, you are now recognized.
Yes, so I, I hear what he's saying about a criminal defense attorney serving as a judge, and I understand that. But what I don't think has been discussed, I think that there's been a large focus that Mr. Smith has only practiced criminal defense. When I personally looked at his website, I've seen that he has also served as a prosecutor as well. I'm not saying that that in any way just should say, okay, you know, whatever, he is just the guy. But I am saying that there's just been a lot of discussion about one facet of the career course he's taken. And while I understand that there's concern that practicing criminal defense could cause, I guess, discrepancies in cases that he may personally defend as an attorney, I was just curious if you guys had any record of cases that he's possibly handled in Lago Vista? And if he even has a record of handling cases in Lago Vista?
Yeah, I, I do not believe we have that information. All right, anybody else in the audience with a comment? All right. If that, yes, Josh.
Mayor, I just want to make one clarification and I, I hope that council does your own research and doesn't take the comments. One thing I don't want to do is Judge Jake Caballero had another commitment tonight. And so instead of making an accusation about how our court is operating, which does seem to be operating well, I do want to read the excerpt from the Supreme Court order. And then, as I said, hopefully council will make that determination. I thought I heard somebody.
Yeah, that, it's me, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I want to advise Josh to pause. I found, I found a provision in the 29th order applicable to municipal courts that reads the way Judge Madison read, that does say injustice or municipal court. So it's specific to those, must not hold any in-person jury, hold an in-person jury proceeding, including jury selection prior to February 1st. So that's one. That's one provision. But the other provision in that particular order also, I think is also applicable regarding courts should not conduct in-person proceedings contrary to the guidance for all court proceedings during COVID-19 pandemic, quote unquote, guidance issued by the Office of Court Administration, which may be updated. I want to make sure that the, our council understands that the judge has established, it, it does say prior to holding any in-person proceedings, a court must submit an operating plan. The judge did submit that operating plan that's consistent with the requirements set forth in the guidance for dealing with group size, time, social distancing and any other restrictions or precautions. So I want to make sure that there's not some misconception that the, the current judge is not operating in accordance with the Supreme Court guidance of the Supreme Court order, not guidance order, and the guidance that they have established related to COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
May I make a comment, sir?
Mr. Madison, yes.
Okay. Aaron, what you say is true, but the way it operates is the COVID-19 operating plan, which has to be approved by our regional administrative judge, Judge Billy Stubblefield, who's a district judge in Georgetown, that's when you're transitioning back when we're going out of COVID. But right now, if you don't believe me, call David Slaton tomorrow, the executive director of the Office of Court Administration, OCA. And he will tell you that courts, municipal courts are required as JP courts to use all reasonable efforts to have virtual court proceedings, period. Not even jury trials, bench trials, but all in-person proceedings. And that's what the, that's what the order is. And we discussed this at TMC seminar yesterday, live, 300 judges. And judge, and, uh, judge and executive director, I'm sure you know Ryan over at TMCEC. And, uh, flat out, he said, you have to operate virtually, and they're not going to take as an excuse, well, it's just kind of difficult for us or not. Now, the ones would be exempt, I think, in all fairness, would be maybe out way out in West Texas. Very rural areas, let's say where you had no internet. But there's still, besides internet, we do telephone hearings in a couple of my courts. When we're having problems with the internet, we just do it by telephone. And that way, you're not having direct contact with people. But the OCA has taken a very strong position, as does the, do the regional judges and the Supreme Court, that municipal courts are not supposed to be having any in-person proceedings. Check with, uh, Ryan over at the Municipal Court Education Center. Don't take my word for it, but I'm telling you that, uh, I attend every conference on this subject. We've had webinars on it with the Office of Court Administration. Uh, and we've go over those orders of the Supreme Court, and TMCEC is adamant about it. Municipal courts should not be having any in-person proceedings. And doing so is a violation of the, uh, Office of Court Administration order. So, but, but check with him. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Marion.
I'm back because I still have the questions I had earlier. And really, they're probably just points of clarification, because I'm not sure I, I heard this earlier, but, so who at the city interviewed or has interviewed, um, Mr. Smith? And are we allowed to access, um, any sort of written record from, um, those interviews? Um, and then the other question is, is there a deadline, um, for us having to, to make this decision? Um, or do we have time to perhaps post for, for this position to see if we might get a deeper pool of applicants?
As far as I know, the only, uh, the only interview that I know is, has been through Judge Cabai, uh, Judge Caballero and with, uh, city manager Josh Ray. Uh, I don't know if there's any documentation that you can access to. These were just oral interviews and, and-
Anecdotal records, perhaps?
And, um, as far as a deadline, um, no, we don't have a deadline. We're just, we're just working with one judge right now. There is nothing in our charter, or there's nothing that, that tells the city manager how he has to conduct his, uh, appointments, his interviews. So, you know, for what, for what it's worth now, it's, you know, it's, it's his responsibility as the city manager. And, um, whatever process he goes through is what he's allowed to do right now. So unless he's directed otherwise, you know. Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have to admit, you guys are confusing the crap out of me, uh, between all the different opinions of what's going on. But, but I, I would ask this one question, and that is, through all the discussion tonight from Judge Madison and Aaron, the research that you've done, I have a question in my mind whether we're supposed to be operating or not right now. Now, Aaron, can you sit there and tell me after what you heard from Judge Madison? And I'm sorry, Ms. Silbera, uh, can you tell me categorically that you believe that we are in the right in operating our court as we are right now? Or do you want to have conversations with the people he suggested and then come back and talk to us?
So I, I have to, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say real quick, Mayor, and this, I'll, I'll get out of the way of the question from Counselor Sullivan. But one of the individuals that was named that we should check with, uh, Stubblefield, knows how we're operating and has confirmed that we are okay. So I want to tell counsel that. And, and remember, this comes back from our presiding judge, a request to fill the position. So I'll, I, I want to answer what Mr. Sullivan said. Yes. We, coming from our judge, have a confidence, but now Aaron can answer since she was asked the question.
So I want to be very mindful of my, um, role in this. I don't, I'm the prosecutor. Yes, I'm the city attorney, but I'm not responsible for the court. And so I have not spoken with the judge specifically regarding his analysis of the Supreme Court order. I want him to answer that question. It's not for me to answer, because I'm not, I don't want to step outside, you know, I want to stay in my lane, sir. Um, now, I, I've looked at it. I do believe the judge is taking all reasonable efforts, um, to conduct the court in the way that it's intended. And if he's, um, reached out and, and gotten confirmation from Mr. Stubblefield that we are in compliance, then, then I'm gonna take his word for that. Um, I, I wish he could have been here tonight, because he would have been the one answering many of these questions and not me.
Sure. And, and I get that. Um, I, I, I guess my, my thought process is if there's any doubt whatsoever about how we're operating, it seems to me that question has to be answered first, and then we take steps with regard to appointing a new associate judge. Um, I, I would be very uncomfortable taking any steps forward right now, tonight, in appointing anybody new until we have it just crystal clear. You've talked to everybody under the sun, and you can come back to us and categorically state, yes, we are operating exactly the way we are able to. We're not violating any orders. And at that time, then I'm ready to try and appoint a new associate judge, but not before that. That's just my personal opinion.
All right. Anybody else? All right. That is everybody. Uh, agenda item number 14 is open for action. Yes, Ms. Marion.
Mayor, I, I would make a motion that we table this, um, agenda item for a future meeting.
All right. I have a motion to table.
I'll second that.
And I have a second by Mr. Prince. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion is tabled. All right. Uh, we're still under consent agenda. There's only one remaining item under the consent agenda, and that is the approval of the following council meeting minutes, October 15th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. And I believe there is, I've already received, uh, a request to have, let me see if I have it written down here. What do I have it written now? It's not there. All right. I have a, uh, I have some, I've had a request to have it amended. Uh, there's a, uh, correction that somebody is wanting to make. And I have that email somewhere, and I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't know which file I put it in, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I help you with that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask whoever, whoever has the correct.
Yeah, I, I was copied on that note from Mr. Roberts.
Yeah. So if you would help, help clarify what the situation.
In, in the minutes, there's a note about a comment Mr. Roberts made, and he asked that that note about his comment be, uh, clarified or amended, uh, to say Paul Roberts requested that post-COVID PNZ meetings continue to be recorded, and that both present and future recordings be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel as soon as possible or feasible. Mayor Tidwell responded by stating that he thought all boards and commissions should be recorded and made available on the city's YouTube channel, end quote.
All right. And yes, I went back and listened to the thing, and I didn't listen all the way to the part about my comment, but I did listen to, um, Paul Roberts' comments. And yes, uh, that is exactly what he said. Um, so.
I'll be glad to forward that email on to, uh, appropriate people if that's helpful.
No, it's just, well, if, if Sandra needs it, but I don't think she, because she's got the recording. But, um, it just, if there's no other, uh, I'll open it up here for discussion, but if that's the only comment, just whenever you get ready to make the motion, just say, I make a motion that we approve the minutes with the, these, this amendment. So is there anybody else that has any comments on these minutes? All right. Anybody from the audience? All right. That's it. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as written with the one modification, uh, from Mr. Roberts, as just read by Mr. Prince.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We're, we're approving the consent agenda, so I think the motion you need to make says, or should say, you, you move that we accept the consent agenda with the modification to the minute it says red.
Right, okay. I figured since there was only one item left, it didn't really matter whether we said a consent agenda or not. But yes, if that's proper, then.
Well, no, there's two, there's another item. There, there's, there's the item for the library extension of the contract. That's the reason why I'm saying this. Otherwise, it would be a moot point.
There's another item?
There isn't. It was the one that was added, number 16, about the extension of the library, uh, contract. It's just a time thing. It's not a money thing. Just a time thing, is my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, consider, um, darn it. Hold on with just a second, because what I printed off today.
Ms. Barton sent out a, an update. I can't remember what day it was, and it added item number 16.
My item number 16 says discussion regarding the city council executive session schedule.
Well, I, I believe that's an old one, Mayor.
Yep. That's number 17 on today's agenda.
When did this come out? I just printed it out. All right. Well, I could have swore I had printed from Monday, Monday at 3:06 PM.
I think she sent it out on Tuesday, if I remember correctly.
When you came out Tuesday afternoon.
Okay. Well, I don't have that. All I have is Monday, 3:06, number 16 was added, but it doesn't tell me what number 16 was. Okay. I didn't get it. Okay. So, um, with that being said, all right, um, is your motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, Mr. Prince, with the corrections to the minutes?
Yes, I will make my motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction to the minutes, uh, as, as submitted by Mr. Roberts and read by, by myself.
All right. I'll second that.
All right. I have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And thank you, Mr. Sullivan, because, yeah, I don't know why, but I do not have that that updated one. Okay. Never mind. It's all in the past now. I'm confused. Where am I at now? I am on 17, discussion item. Discussion regarding the city council executive session schedule. Uh, so, you know, with this executive session, uh, there, in the past, we were doing executive session at the end of our meetings, you know, because citizens didn't want to stick around till 11 or 12 o'clock at night to hear the agenda stuff. Uh, but then we started getting feedback that counsel was coming out of executive session and taking action, and there was no citizens around to hear it, because they all went home or logged off when we went to executive session. Uh, so we moved it to the front of the council meeting so that when we did come back from executive session, if we took any action, that the audience members would be there to actually hear and have an opinion, uh, and be able to make comments to counsel, you know, regarding whatever action we have taken. Um, we also have some issues with the recording, because before we can go into an executive session, we have to start in the open session. So that's why you'll see we'll have two, um, invitations, one at 6 o'clock, one at 6:01. Because we have to start in open session and then go into executive session. But we can't, we, because of the way it's being recorded and stored, um, we can't close the first open session and then go into executive session and then come back out and open up another open session at 6:30 for the, uh, citizens. You know, so we, we have to start the one at the open session at 6:00 and leave it running and leave it recording, even though nothing, it's just audience members, uh, staring at screens and maybe talking to themselves. So that's, you know, the only, the only other option is, you know, like, um, agenda items, if you have, as we're going through the agenda, if we come across something that you need clarification on from legal, and, uh, you want attorney-client privilege, you need to go into executive session, then we'll have to leave in the middle of the meeting and, you know, unless we have something set up, we, it's kind of hard to get into executive session. Uh, it still leaves the citizens sitting there looking at a blank screen for however long we were in executive session. And if we end up doing that two or three times in a meeting, you know, so, I don't know, the, the way we're doing it right now is to try and do it all at the beginning. But, you know, so we, we're all clear going into the agenda. Um, the citizens are around to hear what action we take. And we meet all the recording and re, and retention requirements. Suggestions, comment? I mean, um, I know, Mr. Sullivan, I believe this was your request, so, what, what, what ideas you got?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the main reason why I brought it up was, is I just, uh, because I sat on the other side for the past six months, and I just felt like it was really disrespectful to the citizens, um, to, uh, start, go away, and there be no defined period of time when you were gonna come back. I mean, we just sat there and twiddled our thumbs and asked her, or, you know, what's going on, blah, blah. And so, um, I guess my, my, I would put two suggestions forward. Number one, um, i- if we insist on having the executive session first, um, my recommendation would be, uh, to make it earlier so that we can start at 6:30. And, and regardless of where we are in the executive session, my feeling is the open session ought to start at 6:30, exactly when we tell people it should, and, and that's it. And if we have to go back into executive session later on in the evening, I don't see any problem with that. Um, my other suggestion is, is quite frankly, I think the, the issue we're doing at the, at the end really isn't a problem. Um, we did, I, for the two and a half years I was on council, we never haven't had an issue doing it, uh, at the end. And quite frankly, we're recording it now. And so there, there's no hiding anything from the citizens. If they decide to go to bed, they can wake up the next morning and pull it up on YouTube and see what action came out of executive session. And quite frankly, we're recording it now. And so there, there's no hiding anything from the citizens. If they decide to go to bed, they can wake up the next morning and pull it up on YouTube and see what action came out of executive session. By looking at the recording and they don't have to wade through four or five hours of it. They can immediately go to the last five minutes and see what we say. And so, and I just feel like that's so much more respectful of the citizens starting at 6:30 for the open session. They know it's going to start then. They know we're going to take off then and they know they, they can participate and not have to sit there wondering when we're going to come back.
So how do we handle, how would you handle? Let me see. Like in today's, we didn't, we didn't actually have any free. Scheduled items. You know, to discuss an executive session, but we have the consultation, legal counsel, possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item. Requiring confidential attorney client advice. So on those, are you, are you, are you suggesting that every time we have a question on an agenda item, we leave and go into executive session during the meeting?
No.
Now is to go and have all of our questions answered before we get into. Regular open session so that we're not leaving and coming and leaving, you know, coming and going, coming and going. Five, six, seven times during a meeting. Not that we would do that, but I mean, it has happened that we've had to leave two or three times.
Yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting that, Mayor. Again, for the two and a half years that I served, we never did that. I, I don't remember one time needing to, maybe once needing to go back into executive session on an item and then come back out. And, and what I would suggest is, you know, hey, that, that 30 minutes before from six to 6:30, sure, we can do executive session at that point strictly for that one thing. To talk about issues that are on the agenda, get it done in the 30 minutes, go back into open session, but do the bulk of the, the executive session at the, at the end. I, I just, and, and listen, I am open to any suggestions that result in us starting the open session at 6:30. At a time that the citizens know they can count on. That's really the, my end result.
Okay. Michelle, Ms. Marion.
Just advocating for what Kevin just mentioned, that was actually going to be. My suggestion is to maybe consider moving executive session to the end like they do at the school board meetings or even the state board of education, which we are actually in the midst of this week. They do executive session and consultation with their attorney at the very end. And I wonder if something we might consider is having our agenda or getting to a place maybe where we have our agenda ready. You know, two weeks in advance so that maybe at that executive session at the end of the meeting, like for example, tonight. Perhaps looking at the agenda that's set for two weeks later. And saying, okay, are there things coming up on that agenda in two weeks that we might need to discuss with the attorney now? And then. You know, have that kind of out of the way before the next meeting. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, feasible. It's just a suggestion I'm throwing out there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing executive session at the end. I just know the reason we'd moved it is because we were getting enough, enough complaints from citizens that, hey, y'all were taking action and nobody knows what's going on. And so we, we moved it, but if that's not the case, I don't have a problem with doing it at the end. As far as future agenda items. And in order for you to actually discuss something, even if it's in executive session, it's got to be in the agenda, on the agenda. So you can't sit in executive session and say, hey, should we talk about something that may be coming up in two weeks or a month or something like that? It would have to already be put on the agenda to be discussed in an executive session. With all of our committees and applications from citizens and things like that. Ooh, having an agenda ready weeks in advance as opposed to the. 72 hours that we do now, that would be extremely difficult on our boards and commissions and some of your applications. You know. It, it may push them back weeks or a month before they would get heard, whereas they could get. More time to respond, so. That, that wouldn't be, that would be a tough far as getting an agenda ready weeks in advance. Yes, Mr. Prince.
I, I'm, I'm with Mr. Sullivan in the, in the defining the problem. I think Ms. Marion is saying the same thing, defining the problem that I would like us to solve. In a proposal tonight ideally is how to make it less inconvenient for citizens who are calling into our meetings. And so as I see it, I mean, there's pros and cons to, to all the alternatives. We could move to the end. It seems to me that often the executive discussions. Seem to play into decisions that get made later in that same evening. So having the executive discussion at the beginning. To clarify any, you know, advice from our attorney or things that maybe. Proprietary private information around a real estate sale, for example, that, that impact a decision. It seemed more reasonable to try to do those things at the beginning than the end, but more efficient, maybe I'll say. Mr. Sullivan may have different experience on that, but I, I would lean towards a solution that's at the beginning. But I think allowing 30 minutes for executive session just is proving to be insufficient in, in a lot of cases. And so my proposal, and I'm certainly willing to sit here at the proposal, my, my proposal would be to start the executive session significantly earlier. Maybe instead of 30 minutes ahead of meeting, an hour and a half or two hours ahead. And then if we're done in 15 minutes, we all go eat our dinner and take a break and then come back at 6:30. But then ultimately, I'm just looking for a solution so that our citizens know when they need to call in in order to hear the outcome, number one, the outcome of an executive's meeting. And then number two, the, the main body of the meeting as well.
Yeah, and we have actually scheduled executive session to start at. 5:30 and sometimes five if we know it was going to be longer. We haven't done that. Well, we, 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 we're kind of discussing that, but we wanted to get some. Feedback from Ms. Marion first, because I know she's got that, a job and I didn't know what her schedule allows her, would allow her to be in at 5:30 or five or, you know, so. But. Mr. Davila.
Thank you, Mayor. How about a hybrid of, of the things that you are discussing? How about beginning at six o'clock with a regular meeting and then having the executive session at the end?
Yeah. I kind of like the idea of having, setting aside some time at the, at the. Beginning and the end, because there may be, there may be things that. Need to be clarified from, from our attorney before the meeting, so. As opposed to logging in at 6:30 or six or whenever and then leaving during the. During the middle, I, I would prefer to. Was it Kevin that? Mr. Sullivan that suggested we do 30 minutes? And we limit ourselves to 30 minutes and if there's more. Discussion to be had on executive session items, then that goes in at the end. And we use that first 30 minutes just to discuss. You know, things that may actually be relevant more, that would, you know, help us not have to take. Going to executive session during the council meeting, so. Yeah. I don't want to completely eliminate executive session at the beginning. Josh Ray, did you have some comments? I saw your fingers going up.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I, going back to the comments that we've had, multiple comments and conversations we've had over a three-year period. If we were able to start the executive session at five o'clock, start the council meeting at six and then leave a window at the end that if there was anything we missed, we go there. I mean, I think that still hits everything that Mr. Sullivan said, Mr. Prince said, from what I've heard from council member Marion, it fits her schedule as well. And then we cover the gambit. I, I always have that concern, Mayor. It's not the length of time we discuss. It's the, it's the cognitive abilities that we have as we get across the witching hour of midnight. I like to hang out as long as we need to. But I want us to be sharp and seem, some of our conversations tend to go longer. But I, I just think if, if people are concerned with the front and the back end, if we start in the beginning, when we were in person, we had a hard stop. If we had the executive session beforehand, you and I communicated on time. And when I told you we had five minutes left, you just made everybody stop talking and we went back to the meeting. So we could go back to that hard plan where you just tell us to quit talking and get back to work.
All right, sounds good. Yes, Ms. Marion.
So then am I, I, I think I'm hearing that maybe we would perhaps entertain a thought of maybe scheduling executive session earlier. So instead of a six o'clock start time, I don't know how long on average executive session goes. Would an hour be more like the amount of time that you would normally, you know, I, I know there's always going to be exceptions, right? And maybe in those cases, we can start executive session earlier. I don't know. Are we thinking 5:30? Is that like a reasonable time, an hour, or what do you all think?
I think most times it's, yeah, 30 minutes seems to rush us at times. But an hour seems, seems fine. But then again, it also. You know, if we only want to put in. Yeah, I think, I think an hour is fine. You know, if we get too early, you know, we're just recessed like we do. Yeah, Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I want to point out, Mr. Ray said something about starting at five and, and then going into open session at six. I can't remember if it was you or Ms. Silveira that read from the charter or something. I, I think in our meeting's time, supposed to start at 6:30. So that would be the adjustment I would make to Mr. What Mr. Ray said is that it seems like we're supposed to start the meeting at 6:30.
And Mayor, that's not the charter, that's the ordinance. Ordinance changes by the vote of the council. So if the council changed the plan, then we would just present that to council.
Yeah. I'm off all day on council meeting days or I'm not, so. If I'm off, I'm off or I'm not. So whatever time we start, finish, it doesn't matter to me, so. Anybody else? All right, Darcy, you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for the floor. I, I just want to remind everybody that this, this was voted on at the beginning of the year about what time the meeting was supposed to start. It was declared 6:30 and that was to allow people who have jobs and work downtown to be able to get here and be able to attend and to be able to speak at that first little part of the meeting. That, that, the citizens are allowed to speak on things that aren't on the agenda. And I just wanted to make sure that, that, that doesn't get moved. I understand your need to. Meet an executive session and, and Shalane that she, or Ms. Marion, city council member Marion, that she has a job and I'm sure other people on here do as well. And, but I just would like you to remember that you did vote on it already this year and it was determined 6:30 was the starting time for the city. And the citizens to start this meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right. What number are we on now? Day manager report.
Thanks, Mayor. One item that you and I talked about is I sent out, and going back this, I sent this out to the last council. What we do is we send out the monthly reports and we post those online. So when you and I looked at this before, Mayor, we had talked about the September financial report and the conversation we had was, hey, can we give an overview of that? I encourage everybody that cares about looking at these numbers to look back at all the financial reports. And to compare the start of the year, which would be the October of 19 to the end of the year, which would been September of 20. There's a couple of things that stood out in how the year played out, which are kind of exciting. Last year at the, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had a total of $15.6 million in the bank. And at the end of the fiscal year, we had $19.2 million. Part of the discussion that I hope everyone remembers during our budget planning process was, well, how are we going to pay? For all of the $2.5 million of street improvements and the $1.4 million of street maintenance and the $2.3 million of police department budget. And the $7 million in capital projects at our wastewater treatment plant. Well, the answer is it's sound fiscal practices. And although I'm not sure if, if everyone's still on board with this concept. But the dollars and what we've done over the course of the year and the multiple practices that we've implemented over a period of three years have proven successful. For what's going to happen this year with the number of projects, both community oriented and in value adds for our Lago. So I ask you, when you look at those numbers, you'll see that we still have our town center development dollars and you approved the library tonight. The, the final time extension, so we can get that information over and get that into the contractor phase again, that which will be bid. And then you have the wastewater impact fees are up to about $2.4 million. That'll help us expand our wastewater treatment systems as our population grows. Because all of you are aware that we had 371 new residential builds last year, 289 the year before, 268 the year before, 171, 72 the year before. Looks like we got a lot of growth going and we're going to have to expand. Even though we're going to look at major expansion projects next year in terms of a bond, as, as now Councilor Sullivan's talked about. We have those dollars set aside as a value add. Water impact fees, we've got a balance of about $3.048 million. Well, those are dollars that we've looked at in the budget and we've allocated for FY21 to balance out those things. Other projects, we've tried to wrap those up from the previous bond and we're tying those out. And you'll see that on the monthly report that shows reducing those dollars, the fund balances, which means the projects are being completed. So that's an ultimate value add that the council can look at. We'll also see the number, the, the, these are informal numbers. The audit will come out soon and you'll be able to verify these numbers with the audit. But we see the number for the Lago Vista Golf Course operations at the end of the year, our number, the subsidy, $268,586.09. That's the best number we've seen in forever. And that, again, there are multiple factors that play into this. But there's a crazy value add and that's something that people ask about often. And that's a number that I, I want you to be able to look at that. And be able to factor that into next year. Sales tax number, I send those out monthly too. And we get those typically around the 15th, the sales tax numbers for the year, which goes to all out, all operations for the calendar year. 2020 with December to still come in, and that would be the December distribution, which would be for October. That would be sales tax spent in the month of October. We're at $680,000 right now. The November distribution was the second highest in the history of Lago Vista at $72,000. December, let's just say that the December number is going to be lower and put it into 60, that's going to move us to $740,000. That's $200,000 more than calendar year 2019. That's not just COVID, that's not just Starbucks, that's not just Wild Navy, that's a myriad of different expenses, population increases and things going in a positive direction. So we want to look at those numbers collectively so that we're really painting that picture for how things are happening. I think someone commented before about our, our tax collection rate is fantastic. So when we're going back to the ability to collect our taxes, that's great. We're seeing really positive numbers there. We're seeing our, our revenues, even though we know that there's a, the mayor's reported back on balances that we have during COVID. Because we're not cutting people off and we're not collecting those back debts. Our revenues are still very strong in our, in our water and wastewater utility accounts. We also have a balance in our solid waste collection, which becomes a revenue stream as it comes in. Looking at the individual numbers year over year and comparing not just the start of the year and the end of the year. But look back at, at the end of FY17 and you look at. Fund balances not being strong, that the requirement to have to go in and bond everything instead of having the option to do both. To say that the larger projects are going to be bonded, but the street projects will be paid out of fund balance, out of the ad valorem tax, out of your sales tax. Out of user fees, whatever that may be, out of the sale of, of real estate as, as the previous council just completed. As as the previous council just completed, they effectively sold $340,000 worth of real estate. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan for teeing that up. But these are some value adds that it's a it's a lot of dominoes going in the right direction. So when we're when we're playing out this narrative about things that we're doing in the community, it's easy for some to look at it and say, well, this just all seems to not work. You know, this doesn't make any sense. It's also easy to look at the facts and say, the numbers show us positive. The changes in the community, the fact that we're getting ready, we're working on Loman Ford right now. And Loman Ford at this year, unless something drastically changes or council tells us not to do it, is going to have a fresh overlay on the entire street, just like Boggy Ford, which many thought wouldn't happen forever because it was going to be a $1.4 million project. And it turned out with all contracts in, we ended up getting it done for about $650,000. These are things that the system, the the community has asked for. And previous council up the ante in the total dollars going into the street projects. It's because of good decisions here. So I hope people, when they look at the monthly reports, they'll digest what it actually means to see these numbers and and not just look at individual lines that tell you, hey, our debt service account has $278,000. Well, that's just a pass through to pay our debt. But this means we have the ability to do more and we're doing more. And and you know, before, we've received a lot of calls over the last year about people wanting to move their street up in a street plan. They definitely do because you're spending $4 million this year on the maintenance of streets. That's reservicing, that's slurry seal, chip seal, crack seal and just general maintenance. Before, they didn't have that option. In 2016, they they couldn't say that because there was no money set aside to be able to do that that many streets. It's a fact. When when the gentleman presented the idea tonight to build Phase 1A that council said, hey, let's go with, that's going to add new rooftops, that's going to add new revenues. It's also going to add more stress on water, wastewater, garbage collection and streets and everything else. Police, fire, you name it, it's going to happen. So all these things are playing in well. When we had an economic development meeting today, and I sent that out via email to the council with a proposed possible future business to come into Lago. These are questions they're asking. They want to know what's the community like? How's the how's the growth factor being handled? Can we be a partner in the community? And and the answers are yes. You know, the the numbers we see, when we were talking to the owner of Wild Navy today, she told us some amazing numbers. And I encourage everybody, go visit her second store. She opened up her first store in June and she's already yesterday opened up a second store adjacent to that one. Those are incredible things in our community that hopefully everybody that's on this meeting, the the last 26 of us that are still here, can check out and see the value add because she's bringing sales tax, she's hiring new employees. Vistago bringing new sales tax, hiring new employees, build a brand new building. These are all pluses. So if given the opportunity for every at every council meeting to talk about all the amazing things that are happening in our Lago Vista, I'll gladly take up 20 minutes of your time to give you the good instead of the comments that come from elsewhere. So if you ever have any questions on this monthly report, citizens, council members, staff, I encourage you just to yell at me and ask these questions because I will I will cherish the opportunity to take this monthly report every month and walk through it with people that are genuinely concerned about how we're handling financial management in our city. And it goes not only to the council and oversight, it goes to the finance director and her team and the department heads and a system of people understanding this is how we're trying to get from point A to point B. So not really what we talked about, Mayor, but that's my that's my box.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something?
Who's speaking?
Paul Roberts.
Oh, yes, Mr. Roberts.
I'd just like to piggyback real quick on Josh's comments about businesses flourishing here in Lago Vista. I'd just like to say that Solid Technology Solutions, Inc. is a fantastic place to work. Thank you. That is all.
Are they contributing to our sales tax?
There, that was Mr. Awesome, by the way. I'm not sure who actually was speaking, but it was Mr. Awesome via the words there.
All right, Darcy, did you have a comment on city managers' reports?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Shouldn't the city managers' report all of that that Josh just said be in this packet? I mean, because he was rattling off so many numbers and so much that was going on. And then I had something to say about the moonscape over there. Were those people supposed to get some type of tax break because they were going in for business over there? Because I've heard they haven't yet. So I just wanted to say that as well.
Mayor, I'll gladly hit both if you'll let me. The monthly report is posted every single month on the city website. So every number, although I know a lot of the numbers that go on under city because that's what you pay me for, it's it's on the webpage. As I said, check out each monthly report. Come next week, you'll have you'll have the monthly report for October. So we're typically around the 15th of the month, we give you the next report, depending on how year-end closeouts go. So all those financials, check out the monthly report. On your second question, the Lago Vista Village actually had council approve two separate 380 agreements. One 380 agreement was for the owner of the property. And their dollars were to be able to give them a tax rebate back to use for marketing dollars. However, they have to satisfy certain parameters to be able to achieve that. If you'll recall, on some previous council meetings, they've asked for an extension. Because of COVID, they've been delayed and some of their reaching their goals, so they have not received the incentive. On the second, Wild Navy has not turned in their information yet to Eric Zeno to get the get a plan in place and to receive their incentives. As of our meeting today, when we were talking, I was part of that conversation where Mr. Zeno said to the owner, hey, make sure you get me that. And and she said, I will get it to you. So we're keep pushing it because anything that the council has has provided as a as a benefit or a tool to our businesses, we want to get it there, just the same as the mayor made the comment earlier with Lago bucks. To see people that are valuing from the use of Lago bucks and the business. And and as I say again, even though it's not my floor, the mayor, I applaud you for the million time on Lago bucks and the CARES Act and making sure to secure the $391,435 for our city. No one else can take pride in your efforts to make that happen. And if I get to stamp every dollar that goes out as gift certificate and everyone that comes in is void, fantastic. It's well worth it to see our local businesses say thank you for having their best months ever after experiencing some of their worst during COVID. So I just go back to that fact. Please check the website. We're trying to load it up with all the information. Counselor Marion found a link that wasn't working. Counselor Weatherly found another link last week that wasn't working. I mean, we've keep checking the websites and if you find something that's not working, send it to us and we'll try to fix it as soon as possible.
I'm just going to comment, this is kind of not a city manager report. We'll go back to the items of community interest. I had to go into Sun Hardware today. I was looking for a digital antenna. And the Lago bucks has been such a success to Sun Hardware. They have a section that they have set aside and put their discounted sales items. And they have brochures and flyers for Lago buck sales only. They have actually created a whole section of their store that is on sale if you buy them with Lago bucks. So, yeah, the businesses have definitely embraced the the Lago bucks. It was pretty cool. Anything else? Okay. I think Mr. Ray is done, so we'll go to the last agenda item, I believe. Yep, consider our schedule and items for future council meetings. You can all see the what we have tentatively scheduled for December 3rd, December 17th. Future items, those are things that are, you'll see sign ordinance and zoning district classification. Those are those are two topics that are going to go to committee first. So anything that's not on here that you would like to see added to the agenda? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd love to see an item on there for discussion of water rates. To me, that's going to be a process that starts now and goes all the way through to next budget cycle. And I'd like to get a jump start on it so that we make sure we're fully prepared when the budget cycle time comes around. So is it possible to have, just for discussion purposes only, one on water rates?
For, are you on it? What, when are you on it? December 3rd, 17th, January?
17th will be fine. There doesn't look like there's that much on the agenda. So if we could slot it in there just to start the conversation, I think it'd be great.
Well, that's that's our, that's the meeting right before Christmas. So we have our eggnog and ugly sweater portion of executive session. So, okay, just remember.
All right.
But nobody else stands a chance of winning. He wins every year. I'm telling you.
Mayor, we will have, we will have the fee schedule presented on the December 3rd. Sandra added that today. We forgot to say, but that'll be on for present first reading to council on December 3rd, second reading on December 17th. So you can have that, you can have the utility rates discussion separate, or you could have it inside of that, but we will have that as the item.
All right.
Thank you.
What else? Mr. Davila.
Yes, Mayor, when are we going to do the appointments to the various boards, commissions and committees?
So right now, December 3rd is when we're going to get all the applications to all the council members. We're going to have it on the agenda item as, first of all, appointing our liaisons. We've got several committees that don't have liaisons. There may be some some liaisons that want different committees. I don't know, we're going to, we're going to establish all the liaisons at the December 3rd meeting. Make sure everybody's gotten all the applications. I know there's, you know, we got to make sure we get they're getting them all around. Case in point, you know, Mr. Durbin had talked about his his application. Well, he, yes, he sent it to all the council members, but he didn't send it to our city secretary. So like when when Mr. Williams went to Roy to get the applications, his was not in the was not in the database because it didn't get to Sandra or to Roy. Yes, we have it, but so we've got to make sure, you know, if they've submitted it, their application, I got to make, I got to make sure that I've gotten Judge Durbin's application to the right person so that it's getting out to all the council members. So we're going to use December 3rd to do the liaisons and make sure all the applications are in and get to the right person. And then the 17th is when we will finalize the appointments. We're also, December 3rd, we will also be discussing the roles of liaisons for these boards and commissions. And then, of course, January, they'll take effect. That answer your question?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
When are, when are we looking at as far as dates for the retreat?
I'm going to send out, well, I'll send it out through Josh. So that I'm not sending it directly to y'all and get y'all to put dates down. Send me some dates and we'll go from there. You know, I would like to do it in December if possible. You know, the sooner we do it, I think the better. So I would like to do it in December. But of course, you know, with the holidays and stuff, we really only got about the first two weeks of December. So, but anyway, I'll send that email out tomorrow and we'll go from there. I'll suggest a few dates and then get feedback. Which reminds me, I want to put that on down here, like where we have the sign and zoning, let's see, retreat.
Retreat.
All right, anybody else? Ms. Marion, is that a?
Yes, but I'm happy deferring to Darcy. She's had her hand up a little bit longer.
Yes, she's a citizen. I'm I am with the council members right now.
Oh, okay, sorry. And I don't know if we're still only talking about number 19 or if we can address other things because I think we might have skipped an agenda item.
Maybe, since the agenda item I have is evidently not the last one, but.
The library one, it's the one that was added.
Oh, that was part of the consent agenda that was part of Paul Prince's motion.
You are absolutely right. I see that now.
That was the whole discussion, why? Because I didn't have the library on my agenda, remember?
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right. Yep.
But good catch. Anybody else on council have anything? Mr. Prince? Yes, Darcy, I see your hand. I will not forget you.
There's, I've had quite a bit of feedback. This won't be a surprise to you. But we've, we've got a problem with what some people, and I've actually heard Mr. Jambore call it this as well, you know, bad contractor behavior. So we've got, you know, a lot of build going on. And the question that a lot of citizens are asking is what can we do to be more effective in stopping bad behavior, encouraging good behavior? And I know, you know, the city's working hard to try to do it. I think it just behooves us to have a conversation about, are there some other things that we could give as tools to our city directors and leaders to to address this problem? Because it's a, it's a pretty serious problem that's going on right now.
Yeah, it's kind of vague, but if you'll look at the December 3rd, number four, building standards, that I believe that's what that topic is on there for.
Okay, yeah, we can talk to it under that. Thank you.
I believe that's, I believe that is why. Because I've made, I've made that last meeting and I'm pretty sure that's what that means.
Okay.
If not, it's what it's going to be now. Anybody else? All right, Darcy, you're up. Are you looking to have something?
Thank you, Mayor. No, no, I wasn't discussing that. I see that the library got tabled, but isn't it, aren't you running out of time for that contract with her? And and so I'm just puzzled that you're going to push her back and that you don't even have outside. So, okay, that was one thing. But then another thing was Dave Williams is gone. Was he excused for this meeting?
He was here, but he had an appointment and he left at 10:18.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, he was here. And just so you know, the library was not tabled. It was passed.
Oh, it was, it was passed. Okay. Okay, so it was passed, but we don't actually have a outside of the building done yet because the contract dropped from IRA. So we don't actually have a way that the building's going to look yet. But we're going to, but we're going to keep the interior design without having an exterior building.
We extended her, the the most, agenda that we were discussing was to extend her period of time to design the interior because we don't have the exterior.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But with this being approved, it should not be too long till we're ready to put it out for bids. So. But with this being approved, it should not be too long till we're ready to put it out for bids, so. Yeah. All right, anything else scheduled? Oh, Ms. Marion?
Sorry, Mayor, this is just something I was wondering about. Is it perhaps something to consider for a future agenda topic? Looking at ordinances and which city ordinances might need to be revised or?
Yes, and it's, it's something, it's good you mentioned that. That is actually something that I am going to discuss when we are talking about our roles and responsibilities as liaisons for our council, I mean, for our committees. Excuse me, my eyeballs itcha. All right, anything else? Darcy, what are you laughing at? All right, well, if there is nothing else, then I will call this meeting adjourned at, what time is it? 11:51 PM.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.